You're watching GCTV. Community Access Table Channel 15 in Greenfield, Massachusetts.
All of our productions at GCTV are sponsored in part by Bay State Health, providing the care you and your family need when you need it close to home. Visit them online at baystatehealth.org. Greenfield Savings Bank. Visit them at 400 Main Street in Greenfield. Call them at 774-3191 or go online to greenfieldsavings.com. Greenfield Community College. Providing access and excellence in higher education in the Pioneer Valley. Visit them at gcc.mass.edu. The Hammond Family. The Hammond Family are longtime supporters of Greenfield Community Television. New Fortune Chinese Restaurant on the Mohawk Trail in Greenfield. Visit them online at newfortunema.com. Call them at 772-0838 and check them out on Facebook. Real Cleaning Services. Cleaning Hampshire and Franklin County since 1972. We don't cut corners, we clean them. Check them out online at realclean.com. Call them at 413-422-1143. Peoples United Bank. Located at 45 Federal Street in Greenfield. You can call them at 774-3713 or visit them online at peoples.com. The Solar Store of Greenfield. Replacing fossil fuels and nuclear power one home at a time. Visit them at 23 Fisk Ave. Call them at 413-772-3122 or visit them online at solarstoreofgreenfield.com. Thank you to our sponsors for supporting all of GCTV's productions.
Good evening. Sorry about that. This is the May 15th Greenfield City Council meeting, 193rd regular meeting at the Greenfield High School. This meeting is being recorded, videotaped, and broadcast. If any other persons present are doing the same, you must notify me at this time. Seeing none, Clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Sund.
Here.
Counselor Burson.
Here.
Counselor Alice.
Present.
Counselor Pythron.
Here.
Counselor Dolan.
Here.
Counselor Gilmore.
Here.
Counselor Wheeler.
Here.
Counselor Mayo.
Here.
Counselor Mass.
Here.
President Renaud.
Here.
Vice President Ricketts.
Present.
And Counselor Stumpf.
We have a quorum. Could everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the April 17th, 2019 City Council meeting minutes?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Obeying? Motion passes. Do I have a motion to suspend the rules of procedure?
So moved. That's taken.
Motion's been made and seconded and the discussion seeing done. All in favor?
Aye.
Repose, abstain? Motion carries. Counselor Wheeler, first readings.
City Council First Reading, May 15th, 2019. Appropriate $1,756,616 for the FY 2020 water budget. Appropriate $2,581,259 for the FY 2020 sewer enterprise budget. Appropriate $1,116,744 for the FY 2020 GSET enterprise budget. Establish spending limits on revolving funds not to exceed $410,000.
Thank you. Do we have, first, I just want to make an announcement. If you care to speak during the public comment portion, if you could please come and sign up, that would be appreciated. And do we have communications from the school superintendent, school committee? Oh, come on up. Sorry, it's hard to see with the lights in our eyes.
It's weird to be on this side. Hi, guys.
Hello.
I'll be brief. I know you have a lot going on tonight. We had our most recent meeting. We elected Glenn Johnson. We had to have a tiebreaker. Thank you, President Renaud. We're excited. He jumped right in, started working right away. So we're doing great with that. One of the big things that our main meeting, and I hope that you guys had a chance to check in, was we had a visit from Dr. Bill Dial. He came from the Collaborative and talked to us about what he does, how that works, how they're helping us, and other ways they could be more useful to us, especially when we start thinking about regionalization and all of that kind of stuff. Another really big part of our meeting was a visit from the Greenfield Middle School Principal, Karen Kusland, as well as many teachers and the DSC representatives. And they came and talked about the turnaround plan. And it was really exciting to hear. Everybody's a little nervous about what that means. And one of the things they said over and over was how wonderful the Greenfield Middle School educators and district-wide have stepped up and really worked hard to see what they could do to work. Really, if you have a minute or two, you know, 20, feel free to watch that segment. It was really interesting and really helpful. Talked about the new, what made us into that bracket, including that they are now evaluating on ELL students and absenteeism. That helps take into account your rating. So that hadn't been part of the process before and now is. So it changed things for a lot of districts. We did have those informational presentations, but we also did have the committee reviewing an OML complaint. The response has been filed and the committee is reviewing and trying to find a way to get some OML training. Clearly, we have some violations and we need help in understanding what that means. Our negotiations with teachers and structural assistance and administrative assistance is ongoing. We anticipate considerable deliberation on any necessary changes to the FY 20 budget pending their decisions. All council members should have received an email from the Chair, included the details of our vote, to request that the council add to the district's FY 20 budget. This request is in compliance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 32, and was supported by six out of the seven members, with the mayor being the only outlier. The committee majority agrees the school committee budget is a reflection of true needs and costs of educating our students and strongly recommends that the council take advantage of your authority to provide additional funding to the schools without negatively impacting other departments. You have a tough job. We look forward to the Greenfield High School graduation that's taking place May 31st. There is also an awards night, I believe, on the 30th that we're all going to be trying to get to as well. It's a really wonderful way to see the end of a lot of work. And if you have any questions, please send them our way. I can answer what I can answer now.
Thank you, Member Karen. Does anybody have any questions? Counselor Mass.
You also have a tough job. I'm working with the Greenfield Middle School turnaround team, and I have a specific question about the Greenfield Middle School. Last year, at the end of the school year, the fifth graders who were stepping up at this time of the year, zero fifth graders signed up for the Math and Science Academy. At the end, at the beginning of the school year, approximately eight students signed up. More than two-thirds of the students who are in the Math and Science Academy are there not because they wanted to be there, but because they are placed there. That program was created as a separate school because of a exodus of school choice, and it was designed primarily to keep certain kids away from other kids. We have thankfully gotten rid of that by merging the, co-locating both programs at the middle school. But academically, it's very clear that the results in Math and Science are not better out of the Math and Science Academy. Right now, middle school parents don't know whether the Math and Science Academy is going to exist or what the plan is for the middle school next year. And it would be very helpful for the school committee to make an affirmative step to say, "We are not going to have a Math and Science Academy anymore, but a unified Greenfield Middle School, and this is what your school year's going to look like." And I hope that that is something you might be able to present at the next council meeting.
Thank you, yes. We haven't deliberated on it yet, but we'll definitely bring back more information for you.
Anyone else? Thank you for coming to our meeting.
Of course.
For the report. Communications from the mayor, city officers, and employees.
Good evening, Madam President, councilors.
Good evening.
Good. I can't bend down like that. I think I want to start off with some comments on the budget that you'll be deliberating on. I did have some conversations with the Ways and Means earlier this evening. As you know, the budget FY 2020 was put together in the first quarter of this year. It was after the governor's budget and after the conferees' discussion on revenue for the state, but before the House and before the Senate. Right now, the final step, the conference committee between the House and Senate is taking place. So they'll come out with a compromise budget. But during the past couple of months, there's been some changes in the numbers for the city. So I want to, as you deliberate on funding other departments, particularly the school department, I wanted you to know that Chapter 70 has increased $257,517 to date, and contributory retirement is reduced in our budget by $32,000. So that's a combination of $289,517 that may be shifted at your vote and request to the school department, adding it to the $18,625,000 to then equal $18,914,517. So that can be done without any fiscal impact to those departments because it's an increase and a decrease. The health insurance can also be reduced by $56,000 due to the final negotiated increase or reduction in the increase. And that may be shifted to the school department to then total $18,970,517. Second, there is a stipend, a reduction in the stipend for councilors. Training, travel mileage, registration fees, and travel expenses from $500 per counselor to $250 per counselor will provide another $3,250. That comes from Article 7 and the stipend for school board members and city councilors of the city code. You can, may have to modify that because it is an ordinance and reduce to the temporary reduction from 500 per counselor to 250 per counselor. The $3,250 can then be added to the school department, and it will then equal $18,973,767. The options at this point are to reduce the city department budgets at a risk of service and program loss and layoffs. There is a possibility, they ask, request a school committee and the superintendent to use $400,000 of existing revolving funds from their various accounts to have the school committee reduce their, they have already reduced their contribution of $800,000 that they had in last year's budget to, by $800,000. So asking them to kind of reduce that in a moderated sense to 400 instead of reducing 800 and put 400 back into the budget will help. The money could come from school choice of $100,000, sped tuition of $200,000, preschool tutor of $50,000, sped IDEA account of $150,000. That will still leave approximately $2.6 to $2.9 million plus revenue for the 2020 season. The one other thing that should be looked at closely is to look for the actual costs and the out-of-district costs to include the out-of-district tuition, the circuit breaker, and prepayments to verify, and look at those actual costs over '17 and '18, to verify that the 2.9 million projected for FY 2020 is a value that represents a historical trend. The number of students has decreased and reductions are expected. However, there may be a need to review the actual per-student cost. As you know, it could be anywhere from $25,000 to $300,000 per student. So with $400 of revolving funds added to the school budget, you would then have a budget of $19,373,767. Providing additional funding to the school budget beyond the mayor's submission will cause an increase to the tax rate. It'll be a surcharge on property owners. It'll go to, depending on how much is added to it, you need a two-thirds vote of the council. And Liz has presented an intermittent increase at each $100,000, what it will do to the tax rate and how much will go toward the $19,970,000 request. Liz is going to address an audit issue. I just want to say publicly, I want to thank Chairman Otis Wheeler for responding to some of the concerns of city department heads who were traumatized at the recent meetings going to Ways and Means, and they didn't feel comfortable and have not felt comfortable since. And I want to thank him publicly for his response to those department leaders. We have an audit issue. You want to address the issue as well as moving the date to July?
Right. As I spoke in a prior Ways and Means meeting, there had been some issues with the audit. Initially, just having a new audit firm, it takes a while for them to set up their books and charts for our accounts. So that took them longer. But there also have been issues with a lack of knowledge of Massachusetts municipalities and schools. The end of the story is that our audit is delayed. I wanted, I needed to have a draft audit by May. I don't have it. I'm getting close, but unfortunately, in terms of bonding, you need it by a certain point. So kind of deja vu for last year. But it's not going to be postponed for a year. It's only going to be postponed for two months. We will bond in August. So what will happen in terms of our budget? We currently have budgeted bond principal and bonded interest. What's going to happen is that will shift, and it's interdepartmental, it will shift to short-term paydowns and short-term interest. And so that, I just wanted to make you aware of that. Additionally, the information that you're getting in a handout tonight and will be emailed to you does do incremental increases, but I feel for you all, your hardest job is going to be deciding what is the amount we're looking to fund for the schools. And so I've laid out several options, from fully funding to the various options we discussed. And you have a tax rate analysis of $100,000 increments so that you can see what the impact will be and what the remaining excess capacity will be in choosing those amounts. So I, it's not, it's going to be a hard job, but I think the key is identifying the amount and then saying, "Okay, how are we going to do this?" And if you need any other information, please, please reach out.
Thank you. Councilors, you're free to ask questions, but I want to remind you that there is a full Ways and Means deliberation tomorrow night on the operating and capital budget, as well as next week, there's a full meeting. And we do have a lot of people here who are, I think, more interested in library vote than on the budget vote, but that's just speculation. Again, that's not to stop anybody from asking a question, but it's just a reminder. So are there any questions? Councilor Gilmore.
Sorry, just a quick one. Mr. Mayor, could you please send those figures to us in writing? I was trying to write them down, but I want to make sure I have them as accurate as possible.
Oh, of course.
You may have them now. They were delivered tonight. And there's an email including all of it. Plus, all of this information is on the council drive.
Any other questions? You're saving it all for tomorrow night? Okay. Thank you. Thank you. So now is the portion of the public comment, and I've been asked, that it seems like, because this is, the way we're, the votes are so complicated tonight, I just want to clarify before people comment on the library to say exactly what it is that we're voting on. So in reference to the library, we have actually three votes. And the first vote is to approve the petition that was sent to the city council with verified signatures enough to reach the threshold to then cause us to take the next action, which would be whether or not we rescind our vote, which would mean that, so we've gotten this petition from a group of citizens, so it seems so compelling, we're just going to say no to the library. That would be if we rescind our vote. If we don't rescind our vote, then the third issue is that we put it on the ballot, and part of that is when do we put it on the ballot? So just so that everybody understands what it is that we're looking at. Could somebody please get me the public, it says public forum at the top, and I think it's, thank you, Director Smith. I think they sign up, I think everybody signs up for the same. I think, yeah. No? Okay, none signatures there. Okay. So seeing the amount of folks on this list, I'm going to ask that you keep your comments to two minutes, only because to that, everybody has a chance to speak. Paul Jablon. And please don't forget to state your name and your address for the record.
I think it's about 30 seconds. Paul Jablon, 73A Fairview Street here in Greenfield. Firstly, please do not rescind your vote to fund the new library. It has been two months since the March 20th vote. Our library building manager, architects, and engineers would now be two months into that process of building a new library. But less than 400 people stopped this process. They are not the majority of people to have contacted the council members, unlike the thousands who are in favor of this library as a heritage to their children and grandchildren. If we wait until November for a vote, it will delay us more and give us additional costs of about another $150,000 in these delay costs. The charter allows for an early election, possible in late June or early July. Let's get this to a vote as soon as possible so our city can reap the financial and social benefits of our new library.
Thank you. Karen Larabee.
Karen Larabee, 24 Oak Hill Acres. Good evening, councilors. Hi, Mom. I can't believe I'm here, I'm back again here and moved to speak. I'm really a pretty shy person. I like to work in the background, but here I am. I'm shocked and disappointed that 400 people can come forward after your vote and petition for a referendum regarding a new library. I appreciate all the hard work you did to educate yourselves regarding the pros and cons of a new library, and then to have your decision overturned by people who never asked these questions during the long process. I know that, I know that you'll address the charter so this never happens again, but since it has and we are in this position, I'm asking you to reaffirm your yes vote and to vote for a special election to be held at the end of June or early July so that the building process can move forward. The cost of the delay outweighs the cost of a special election. Wow, what a learning experience this has been for me, and I thank you for all the time and energy you have spent trying to make Greenfield a stronger and more vibrant city. Have a good night.
Before I call the next speaker, I can see the list of who's speaking, and I have a feeling that not all are going to get applause, and my fear is that it could end up being an applause contest. And I don't want anybody to feel like they're ostracized for speaking, and I know no one means harm in this room, but if you could hold your applause, we are all totally okay if you applaud after we vote or boo us, and we can take it. I just don't want folks, it's nerve-wracking enough to come here and sit in front of, you know, the judge and jury. So if we could please hold our applause, I, and I'm sure the rest of the council really appreciate it. Thank you. Ellen Thompson.
Okay, just want to say that I'm really against the building of this new library in the way that it's been presented. And I'm kind of tired that there's a lot of disregard for the rule of law by some on the council and by some that are running the town and involving themselves in much more than they should. And that's what I want to say.
Thank you. And also, folks could just pull that microphone right up to their mouths. I want to make sure everybody in the back hears. Kia Burton King. And Karen Patnodd, you're after Kia, just so that people know to get ready to come up. Thank you, Councilor Gilmore.
Good evening. My name is Kia Burton King. That's 20, I live at 27 Riverside Drive, Greenfield Gardens, Precinct 9. First, I just wanted to say thank you all for the hard work and effort that you all are putting into the FY 2020 budget. Please give the schools the money that they're asking for and then some. The mayor mentioned earlier today during Ways and Means that we have less students, but I know that the truth that these, we may have less students, but their needs continue to grow. Great things happen in our schools, but not enough. It's not enough. It's really not enough. And money can solve that and help. The proposed budget has no room for innovation. Our kids deserve it. Our community needs it. My children had the privilege of going to Newton and ELT school. I don't, I can't even imagine what their school experience would be like without those extra funds. That money has brought technology. That money has brought in people to just bring them awesome experiences, music, and all types of things. All the kids in our district deserve that, if not more. I just, you know, buses are in question. We know the impact of, you know, taking away certain bus routes. We just need the money. And the kids deserve it. And that's all, it's just short and sweet. I'm not going to throw numbers at you. You guys have done hard work and you know what the numbers are, and you know the impact of the cuts. You know, our kids need more help. Their needs are higher. I don't see any additional funding for school adjustment counselors and extra services that they need. So, and I appreciate all the hard work to make sure that the, you know, the most, you know, bare minimum needs that they can get through with are funded, but we need more than that, and they deserve that. Thanks.
Thanks, Kia. Karen Patnodd, and then Robert Cloudier.
Hi. Karen Patnodd, 17 Mary Potter Lane. I'm actually here to deliver a public comment from Jake Toomey, 20 Phyllis Lane, who's the principal at Discovery School and is celebrating the Grin Spoon Award winners tonight in Holyoke, so he asked me to read his public comment. He's asking you to support and fully fund the Greenfield School Department operating budget as originally proposed by the school committee. He wears three hats, that of a resident, as a parent of three children in the schools, and as an educator and principal in one of our schools. As a resident, he understands there's a range of town needs and demands. He appreciates all the services and infrastructure the town provides. He values the quality emergency services we have, the great work of the DPW, and his family uses the library regularly. He supports all these projects and services because he knows they bring value to our community. And as such, he's completely comfortable with paying relatively higher taxes knowing the investment we are making into our community. As a Greenfield citizen, he wants to know that we're properly investing in our As a Greenfield citizen, he wants to know that we're properly investing in our future citizens, so our town can continue to flourish and grow for generations to come. As a parent, he's concerned with the mayor's proposal to cut 1.3 million dollars to the school budget. With two children at the middle school and one at the high school, he cringes at the thought that they may lose potential courses, programming, and enrichment activities. All things he knows his three boys love about school. His eldest loves film and TV production, and it's his primary interest both in school and as a potential career field, and this is one possible area that could be eliminated. Additionally, beyond courses and activities, our kids should have teachers and administrators who feel secure, valued, and supported, as opposed to a high turnover rate. And as a parent, knowing there could be devastating cuts, he has to ask himself if Greenfield Public Schools are the schools he wants his children to attend. As an educator and administrator in the community, honestly, he's at a loss and feeling very discouraged and frustrated. In the schools, we continue to see a significant increase in student needs.
Karen, I'm sorry.
I'm gonna wrap it up. He asks that you please support the school committee's budget for the sake of our kids and the sake of our community, and he thanks you for holding the public hearing and for truly listening to us and for the work that you all do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Robert Cloutier, followed by Jennifer Peralt.
Robert Cloutier, Wisdom Way, Greenfield. I'm agreeing with Councilor Sun that access to the library is, is possible. I ran through it this morning to find out how to get there, and it's not, as far as I'm concerned, it's not much of a problem. They really wanna get in there. As far as sounding like this is free money for the, for the school, or, I mean, for the library, we're gonna be paying for it one way or the other. And this comment about having only four hundred people come in later on in the program, I feel that I'm one of them, because I wanted, I just laid back to see how things were gonna play out. And I'm sure a lot of people didn't wanna comment on it, so they wouldn't feel ostracized. I've got to the point where I'm, I'm gonna speak up and, and speak my mind, and I think the, with the, with the atmosphere of having access to the internet, the, the library doesn't have to be that important where they can, they can get a lot of information through the internet. And I believe there's also volunteers that can deliver books to the people that are shut in. Also...
Comments in the back, one more time, and I'm gonna ask for you to be removed. Go ahead, Mr. Cloutier. Sorry.
Also, I, I believe the thing is too important. I don't believe it's, it's important enough for the council to decide for the town. I think it should go to a vote in the general election and not have a special election and waste that much more money for the town. And that's the way I feel about it. And I, I think really that the town of Greenfield is, is trying to go in the right directions, but I think they have too many irons in the fire. And that's the way I feel. I just don't want taxes to keep going up as they are going. So, thank you.
Jennifer Peralt, followed by Miranda Scap, Scapace.
You got it. Okay. Jennifer Peralt, 258 Chapman Street. I wanted to speak about our school system. Our school system is already struggling due to lack of funding, compliance, and special ed management transition at the middle school. Our schools need more support, not less. If the school budget passed it, I would anticipate paying a hundred percent for school supports, sports, lots of music program, foreign language, arts, and buses. Our children rely on these programs to make school passable for them. They struggle in classes, and these are electives, and I understand they're electives, but these are what kids are passionate about. This is what brings them to our school system. There are not kids that wanna go to school for math. There are kids that wanna go to school for band, and music, and art, and the extracurricular activities that make school enjoyable, and what we remember as enjoyable. This budget passes, I would look to send my children to a different school, because I believe that my children have a better opportunity at another public school should this budget pass. This budget does not support our teachers. It does not support our school system staff, and I believe that the lack of support that in this budget is presented by the mayor will lead to staff leaving our public schools, which that turnover will then impact our children, even if you fund it. Your lack of support to our staff leads them to feeling like their jobs are not secure. I don't think that's fair to our public schools, and I hope in the future that our next mayor is more supportive of our public schools. In addition, if the library should pass, I would hope that you have figured out and supported the Transportation Authority as to where they will put their buses on Deerfield Street, should the fire department move to that poorly maintained building that was used by the Transportation Authority. I don't believe the fire department will want to be going there, but that's my opinion, and I hope it proves different. Thank you.
Thank you. Miranda, followed by Crystal Zimmer.
Hi, everyone. Miranda Scappas, 90 High Street. I wanna thank you for the service that you provide to our community. Just to give you a little background on me, I participate in the school, school council meetings for both Greenfield High School and Federal Street School. I'm also the PTO representative of Federal Street School. And furthermore, I live on High Street, which is right near, right near the junction of Main Street. My office has been through the construction of the bus, the bus station, the parking garage, and the courthouse. We, although we are not looking forward to the construction of a new library, given just the traffic flow for three employees, we are looking forward to the betterment of Greenfield, and I hope that you maintain your position on the building of the library. The school budget is really why I'm here. I'm glad to hear that, that can you be here for two reasons. The proposed budget is really what the school needs for enrichment of our children, the continuation of education in our community, and this showing not only to teachers, staff, and administration, but to the parents that it matters. My children enjoy many of the programs that are offered by the high school and Federal Street School that continues to keep them in our community and keep the spirit of Greenfield alive. I would really appreciate it if the budget could come up to that 1.3 deficit, so that my, my children and other children in all of the schools don't have to make sacrifices to their education and the enrichment of their intelligence. Thank you.
Thank you. Crystal Zimmer, followed by Jan Adam.
Good evening, city council members. My name is Crystal Zimmer, 10 and a half Stanley Street in Greenfield. I'm speaking tonight to urge you to invest in the future of our city by restoring the 1.3 million dollars cut from the school committee's approved budget. Our schools are already lacking in necessary funding. Two of our elementary schools have either no library or no librarians at all. We have not had a technology budget for three years, and our behavioral programs are insufficient and in dire need of staffing, inadequate training, and planning. Are we really now going to have cuts in sports, art, music, and languages from our curriculums? Our school system should be an attractive school system. Greenfield is the seat of Franklin County. We should have sports and music and art that reflects the values of the Greenfield community. We've voted the most playful city, but when our soccer fields are empty and our auditoriums are no longer playing music, how attractive is Greenfield going to be? How many scholarship possibilities are our students going to lose next year? And how many of those students are going to choice out of their district for better opportunities, costing districts millions more? My oldest son is ten. He's autistic with ADHD and comorbid anxiety, and my younger son has ADHD, and both have had an amazing special ed experience at Four Corners. The instructional aides have helped them immensely. The smaller class sizes and the amazing teachers have really made a huge impact in their lives. My oldest came home thrilled about possibly playing the clarinet next year, when he goes to middle school. Am I going to have to tell him that that was cut? I'll let you tell him, because anyone who knows my son knows that he doesn't take disappointment well. Even worse, when instead of coming home next year excited about finally understanding line graphs like my oldest did today, or graduating to the next level of math that my youngest exclaimed as he showed me his most recent math assignment this morning, they come home anxious, disappointed, stressed about not wanting to go to school because they don't understand math. Because that's what happened when services were removed from my son's IEP. Sunday night panic attacks, behaviors in class increase became a norm for him until we finally got them returned in January. Please do not cut the budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Crystal. Jan Adam, followed by Ben Minor.
Okay, this is more intimidating than the other room. Hi, I'm Janice Adam of 252 Davis Street, and I thank you again for the opportunity to come here and speak to you. As many of you know, I'm very passionate about the library, and I wanna first thank you all for doing what you do, because it's important, and it's important that we have councilors, and I'm very confident that you are taking everything that people are saying into consideration, and that you all wanna do what's best for our community at large. Am I, is that better? Okay.
Yeah, just a little closer maybe.
So, so first I wanna ask you to please, please reaffirm your March twentieth vote for the funding of the library. It would be so horrible if we were to leave that 9.5 million dollars on the table and not allow Greenfield to grow, especially when the state is gonna be putting up so much of that money, which, if we remember, is really our money, 'cause we paid it to them in the first place. The second thing I'd like to ask you to please do is I understand that there is a request to have a referendum vote on the library. While I do not believe, and that there was ever an oppo, a missed opportunity to have voices heard over the past six years, there were many public comments, there were public hearings, people's voices were able to be spoken. However, I understand that with the charter, that, that there's a concern, and rather than belabor that, I think it would be best if we moved forward with a referendum, but do it as soon as possible, so that it can be completed by July. The reason for asking you to go that route is because the cost of the library goes up approximately forty thousand dollars a month, and a special election is about fifteen thousand dollars. So fiscally prudent would be to have a special election as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Jan. Ben Minor, followed by Caitlin Von Schmidt.
Oh, I timed these. They were two minutes and fifty-two seconds, and I'm gonna edit on the fly. So many of us in this room tonight are feeling deeply frustrated at this ongoing obstructionism over the library project. It isn't worth repeating the facts surrounding the funding of the project, as those who oppose it have largely chosen to ignore the facts and pretend that the people presenting facts are simply liars. This is not a tenable situation for town government any more than it is for national politics, and yet, here we are. Rather than bothering to run down the same list of reasons why such projects, such as new libraries, are important, and rather than imagine that people who have denied the facts for months and months will somehow this evening find themselves receptive to reality, I'm here to throw up my hands in total wonder at how this council could possibly justify allowing any further obstruction of this project, which is so strongly desired by the obvious and overwhelming majority of the town. Shooting down this childish petition with its obviously intentionally misleading wording will be an example of this council taking itself seriously and taking this process seriously. Allowing it to continue on simply drags out the process and sends the message that if the council decides something you don't like, if you're in the minority, throw a temper tantrum, bring the system to a crawl. It's time to turn the page. On the subject of a patriotism committee, I'm interested in that, but I'm also given pause to consider the good work so many American patriots here in Greenfield are already devoting themselves to every single day. Volunteering for the school committee, standing with striking stop and shop workers, seeking to make our town welcoming to all people regardless of their nation of origin. And it begins to occur to me that Greenfield has had no trouble displaying its patriotic bona fides to date. So perhaps the need for a patriotism committee is a solution in search of a problem? Just my two cents on the issue. And as for lowering the speed limit downtown, that's a good idea. I say go for that.
Thank you. Caitlin Von Schmidt, followed by Ed Berlin.
Hello, I'm Caitlin Von Schmidt. 15 Congress Street is my address. I'm gonna try to bullet point things here in my two minutes. One, I hope that you fix the charter. The idea that this small amount of citizens with a petition like this can call into question a decision of the council seems absurd and would bring politics in the town to a screeching halt. I hope that you will certainly affirm the library vote, and that you will hold a special election as soon as possible. This seems like pretty obvious. Of course, the money has seemed obvious all along, and there have been questions about that, but clearly the amount of money that we would spend on a special election is far smaller than what we will spend waiting for an election in the fall. Yeah, and, yeah, library, duh. And as far as the school budget goes, I really, really, really hope that the full budget that was requested will be passed. The very fact that we call these classes electives bugs me. Of course, that's nationwide, but these, these classes are not fluff. They're not meaningless stuff that we put on to make kids happy. These are really crucially important things, music, language, art. These are things that keep kids going to school, keep kids happy. And it's been found that steam, in fact, rather than stem, is the most effective way to educate children, and that, in fact, without the creativity that comes from the type of thinking that you do with art and music, that advances in science will be crippled because people cannot make the leaps that are necessary with that kind of strict thinking. So yes, and also, yes, lower speed limits, please. The idea that thirty is what the speed limit is in neighborhoods blows my mind as a parent and a pedestrian. Thank you.
Thank you, Caitlin. Ed Berlin, followed by Chris Borji.
Good evening. Ed Berlin, 20 Orchard Street, Greenfield. For those who don't know me, obviously you do. I too am a bit dismayed that I have to be back here again asking you to reaffirm a vote that you made after a seven-year process. We've been before you multiple times. We've had multiple public hearings. We had a petition that over fourteen hundred people signed. We'd had over a thousand emails in support of the library sent to you folks. And then we had your vote. We all left that day thinking that a grand compromise had been accomplished. And I can't help but feeling a little bit blindsided by what had happened. But I've been accused of not wanting to adhere to the rule of law, but let me just say this, that when I spoke to you all last week about my concern about a referendum, I was relying on the actual wording of the charter as written, as well as what town council had indicated a couple of months ago, which is that there is no provision in the charter as written for a referendum. That's why I asked the question about how can this be done. Since then, I understand there has been a new opinion from town council, and I understand that based on that, that there is, seems to be a push to have a referendum. I am not against that at all. If that's what the law requires, I will be the last one to say do not follow the rule of law. However, the, the charter allows you to establish a special election as, at your convenience, which means it could be done as soon as you would like it to be done. And I would ask that you do set up this referendum as soon as possible, preferably at the end of June or early July. The costs, the escalation costs for this library are over forty thousand dollars a month. Dan Pallada, our project manager, is here in the audience. He volunteered to come, and he's available to answer your questions.
Thank you. Chris Borji, followed by Rachel Gordon.
Good evening. Chris Borji, 290 Barton Road. Whoever said government was easy, all of you know that it is not, but tonight we exercise government. Government that people feel represents them, and each one has a voice. I applaud you, and I thank you very much for taking this matter in hand in the March meeting. You upheld the library vote. It's very essential to this town. Won't reiterate everything that went on. I am here to say, do not rescind your vote tonight. Please look strongly and purposefully at the referendum. Move it up. Let's get it over with. Let's move our business on. There are a lot of challenges facing Greenfield in the future. In regard to budgets, don't forget, budgets are just beginnings. They change all the time. You can add, you can take away, you could reallocate. It's moving and fluid. Please do your best, as you always have, to see that the to see that the government of Greenfield is carried out in its most appropriate grassroots level. Thank you.
Thank you. Rachel Gordon, followed by Crystal Santos.
Hello, what's there? Good evening, my name is Rachel Gordon. I live at 10 Eastern Avenue. I'm just going to echo what a number of other people have said. I don't believe that these petitions are valid according to the charter, but you will make the decision you will make on that. Please do not rescind the vote to build a new library. And one thing that I hope that we can all agree on here is that spending $12,000, if we hold a referendum, is a lot better than spending hundreds of thousands of dollars in the costs, in the money lost because of the escalation costs of the new library. So if you call yourselves fiscally responsible, which I think all of us try to be with our town resources, then I think there's only one way to go with this if we decide to hold a referendum, and that is to do it as soon as possible. That is what you need to do if you're being responsible stewards of our town's resources. That's what I'm going to say about the library. Please fully fund our schools. I'll echo what everyone else said about that as well. These are not extras for our children. They are necessary programs, and like the library, are an investment in the future of Greenfield and its citizens. Please lower towns' speed limits to 25 miles an hour downtown. Again, that is for our safety. It's an investment in our community. And I also want to call your attention, just briefly, to the fact that, according to the recorder yesterday, there was a noose found hanging from a tree at Greenfield Center School. And apparently, this is not the first time that this has happened. It's happened at least twice. I don't have any more information on that incident. As part of the organization not in our town here in Greenfield, we are working to try to get some more information and hopefully organize some kind of a response to this. But I urge you, as council members, to also take a strong stand against that kind of activity happening in our community. We know it's happening everywhere in this country. White supremacy and racism and other forms of oppression are growing and becoming louder, and we need to keep that out of Greenfield. Thank you.
Thank you. Crystal Santos, followed by Steve Adams.
Hello, good evening. Crystal Santos, 714 Country Club Road. I've never been to a Town Council meeting. My husband works nights, so here I am with both my kids. I think the budget cuts really just compelled me to come forward and just check in and make a comment. My daughter does chorus at Federal Street, and she has decided that she wants to take band Latin next year. And she shared that with me, and I looked at her, and I said, "Well, let's just see what happens." And it just broke my heart, because as parents, we always want to do better than our parents did for us. And I had every opportunity under the sun, growing up in Eastern Mass, and to think that I'm not going to be able to offer that to my daughter next year kind of makes me feel that I'm not doing what I need to as her mom. So I just wanted to leave you with that comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve Adams, followed by Lori Tehan.
Steve Adams, 252 Davis Street, Greenfield. I want to echo what everyone else said in favor of the library. I read Tuesday morning's paper with a mix of incredulity and disappointment. I was incredulous that in the nth hour, after seven years of hard work by the Friends of the Library, the library trustees, and the huge grant from the State's Board of Library Trustees, and after the Greenfield citizens made financial pledges to support the new library construction, and finally, the grand compromise, that a group of unhappy folks might derail the project. The city's attorney has stated that the literal language of the city's charter, in place for two years now, would allow you to ignore this last-gaffs referendum petition. And yet, the attorney has also advised you to take the least risky approach and ask the question at the ballot box. My hunch is that your decision will be to take the question to the voters. The question is when? Citizens of Greenfield, both for and against the library, have spent a lot of time and energy on this question, and it deserves its own day, sooner rather than later. Each month, the project's delay costs money. On the flip side, the longer it gets delayed, the longer another town in the Commonwealth is on pins and needles waiting to find out if they're moving up on the list to get funding for their library project. Let's not make the November election a single-issue race among candidates running for office here in Greenfield. Councilors and mayor. There are a lot of issues that I'm hoping the candidates will weigh in and beyond, well beyond the library. And finally, some of you are not seeking reelection in November. The library question should be one and done on your watch. If you're going to put the question to the voters, please make it in late June or July, and not towards the end of the year. And thank you very much for your service. And fun.
Thank you. Lori Tehan, followed by Steve Ronheave.
Hi, Lori Tehan, 198 High Street. And I am losing my voice, so I'll just, I'll try to get through it the best I can. I'm here tonight because, you know, we were really thinking about a lot of things that have gone on in the city of Greenfield lately, a lot of big projects. And this library, you know, and I am very much for libraries, but I'm just not for building a new library. I think our town did a report on our public buildings a while back, where they looked at the public library and figured out that they needed about $67,000 to do needed repairs. And I'm looking at that in comparison to about a $21 million, which I've been told is more of the accurate price tag. Even with 9.3 of grant money, it's still going to put the majority of the cost of the library on the taxpayers. And where we're, you know, already knowing our tax rate's going up without the library even being figured in, and we're seeing these cuts to our school budget, which I'm really, you know, very saddened to see happen. You know, it's going to make people start thinking about, you know, what's going on in our schools and school choicing their children out of Greenfield. So I'm just here to kind of ask us to think about having the spending that we really need when we're spending taxpayers' dollars, and not just what some people might want. And again, if we do need a fire station, that should be a priority over building a public library. And so that should be more carefully thought out and maybe not rushed to be cited at this time. So, you know, I'm asking our Greenfield councilors to please rescind the vote for building the library and help us be maybe more fiscally smart about the way we spend our taxpayers' money. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. Steve Ronheave, followed by Melody Goodwin. Steve, could you put the mic next to you?
Oh, I'm sorry.
And don't forget to say your address. You can hold it like that, too, if you want to.
And again, good evening, everybody. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Steve Ronheave. I'm a registered voter and taxpayer.
Steve, could you state your address?
206 High Street. I am here to ask you to rescind your vote for spending over $20 million on the proposed library. Considering that this library is now very functional and with some improvements, that would cost far less than $20 million, I ask you to please reconsider. That being said, I believe as a community, it's imperative that we distinguish between what our town may want and what we really need, which begins with keeping spending within realistic limits that our citizens can afford. I offer you, I offer to you at least two suggestions that should be prioritized ahead of a new or remodeled library. Number one, and this is just recently from reading in the paper, a realistic budget for the recently opened John Zahn Community Center, which your council renamed after a budget was set for only the senior citizen activity. And if we can't get a budget right for a $4.2 million facility, I really don't want to experiment with a $20 million facility. Number two, the Friends of the Library only presented suggested costs for the library and no hard numbers for the fire department. There were numbers, but they weren't hard. This actually has to be dealt with first. Again, where is the prioritization? Since both the cost and the tax impact--
Steve, could you wrap it up? The buzzers just went off.
One page. That's it. I'll talk real fast.
No, you can't. Sorry. You have to wrap up the sentence that you're on. Everybody, it's the rules for everybody.
In summary, a majority of this council is either up for reelection or having, leaving office. What do you want your legacy to be? A staggering debt load that many citizens will find too hard to afford, or a budget that is thoughtful and prudent? In the event that you don't accept our petition, yes, we will accept your invitation to sue you. Thank you very much.
Point of voter.
Counselor Mouse.
Madam President, would it be within our rules of procedure to allow public, people making public comment who have written statements that they're unable to complete to file those written statements with the clerk so that councilors can view their full statement in its entirety?
Sure, of course.
If he wants to.
Yeah, anybody can file their statements and email it to the Town Council. Melody Goodwin, you're the last speaker.
I really don't need a microphone.
Yes, you do.
I really don't. My name is Melody Goodwin, and I live at 29 Meadow Lane. And I'm also the Newton School principal. There are 1,700 living, breathing human beings who are not in this room. They are the children of this town. And I ask that I represent their voice, because for the past couple of nights, I haven't slept because there are crying teachers in my office every day. You are going to lose the best thing this town has, which are the educators in this town. This town does not pay teachers, as well as the surrounding districts. But they are here because they love this town. They're young. Many of them have their families here. They've bought houses. They're raising their children here because they believe in this town. They're in my office, asking for letters of reference. I could go somewhere else and get a lot more money. I believe in this town. That's why I get up at 4 o'clock every morning and drive to Newton School for six. There are, you have principals who live in this town. We pay taxes in this town. And I guess the thing that worries me the most, besides the fact that parents are leaving, is your educators. You have the best educators in Massachusetts. I have been an administrator since 1996, and I have worked in other districts. The teachers here are why, when we crashed the first time and almost went bankrupt, you didn't become a Level IV school district, and the state didn't take you over. It was because of the teachers and the people who believe in the children. The children are not here. When we presented the school budget, I was sad because there wasn't, the audience wasn't full. But I believe, the first house I bought with my parents was on Grinnell Street. Bill Allen across the street, John Zahn. They sat on their porch, and they talked about the next generation of people don't care about their town. I'm here to tell you, I am that next generation, and I give a damn about this town.
Melody, we have to wrap it up.
I am. You are the caretakers of the future of this town. Please value the educators who live here.
Thank you. That is all who signed up, but I will allow, if you will, a lightning round of comments, meaning we'll give you a minute to speak if you want to line up here. If nobody wants to speak, or you feel as though everything's already been said, that's, that looks like that's not the case. Great. So, but it's going to be a lightning round. It's going to be one minute. And please state your name and your address.
Hi, Anne Mayo, 143 Wells Street. Thank you, councilors, and good evening, everyone. Please do not rescind your vote on the library. First of all, I am in strongest possible terms, this is not an accessible library. Try it in a wheelchair. You'll have a different opinion. So please don't rescind your vote. I feel citizens, even though they've had a chance to express their opinion, not just at Town Council, but via emails, calls to councilors, et cetera, letters to the editor, but if we need to, please do have an election ASAP. And May 16th, happy 36th wedding anniversary, Councilor Anne.
Thank you, Anne Mayo.
This is a first for me. Thank you for having us all here today, and I would like to make one point. Most of you have at one point in your life dealt with a bully. We all understand how bullies work. And I believe that you people are the objection, the objective of bullies at this point. They've taken a small group of people and tried to force their will on you. You made a decision. I think the courage of this group, making that decision to begin with, was a wonderful thing. I would like you to continue with that courage. And remember, often when a bully doesn't get his way, he threatens you with something. So, thank you.
Thank you. Oh, could I have your, could we have your name and address for the record, please?
Sure. Herb Forgie, 290 Barton Road.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, name and record for the address, please, even if I know you.
Good evening. My name is Milan Dragisovich. I reside at 210 High Street. I'm a 14-year resident of Greenfield, along with my wife and three kids. I want to thank the council for their good faith vote. By the way, this is the first time I'm speaking in front of the city/town council. Appreciate it. I want to thank the council for their good faith March 20th vote, a vote that occurred after many months of deliberations, meetings, public forums, where everyone in a democracy has the right to come forth and express their views. I think we were given that ample opportunity, and the council voted upon it, and I think it's time to move forward. I do have one request, that when you hopefully reaffirm this March 20th vote, that you do so unanimously this time around. That'll send the signal that needs to be sent, that the majority of citizens in this town have voiced their democratic right for this library. This library, in just in conclusion, will be the rising tide that lifts all boats. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to speak to the comments that suggest, oh, the library's fine. We can make do with it as it is. If you're able-bodied, that might seem to be the case. But if you're not, I can speak from experience. That library is really far from equitable to people with significant levels of disability. Using a wheelchair in that building is more difficult than many people can imagine. Even with years and years of experience and being a pretty competent wheelchair user, that library building is extremely difficult to be in. I'm aware of the inequalities built into that building every time I'm there. I urge you to move forward as expeditiously as possible and support the library. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Faith Kaufman. I live at 39 Gold Street. I've lived in Greenfield for 25 years. And I was hopeful about this community, but when I see that we have a structure set up that allows a small group of bullies to force reconsideration and relitigating of a decision that's been made by Democratic-- that's been made by democratic process, I just wonder where it ends if we back down to that. Next, it will be like, say you pass the school committee's proposed budget, or you pass a different school budget, it doesn't matter, and get 400 people to come and say, no, you have to redo that, you have to take that one back. Same thing with the DPW budget, the public safety budget. Why not? Why not take back any vote that you make? We can do the whole process, and then 400 people can come and write a petition and say, no, we have to do it over? I just can't see it. Thank you.
Laura Baker, 22 Cleveland Street. I just, I'll be short and sweet. I think an investment in the library and the schools, that's an investment in our future, and I urge you to invest in our future.
Thank you.
Bernie Baker, 22 Cleveland Street. I want to urge you very strongly not to rescind your vote about the library. I think we absolutely need to have that library, and I strongly urge you to completely fund the school budget. These are quality-of-life issues. I understand you have great fiscal responsibilities. I believe as the elected leaders of this community, you also have quality-of-life responsibilities. Thank you.
Thank you.
Wendy Goodman, 529 Green River Road, Greenfield. I'm struck, I don't want to call people bullies. I don't think that's what this is about, but I do think that what we're looking at is, are we going to make our choices out of fear and out of limitation? Or are we going to make choices out of what we want to build? And I get that we're constrained, but I don't think that these choices should be made from a place of constraint. Both the school library, the school and the library are talking about growing into the future that we want, and I would hate to see that limited by our fear of income and finances. Thank you for your concern.
Thank you.
Sarah Ahern, 85 Crescent Street. I wasn't going to speak today, but I want to speak about the school budget. Please fully fund our public schools. I am a former behavioral paraprofessional that worked with our most vulnerable students in this district, at the Mohawk District, at the Center School for Crisis Intervention in Holyoke, and Step Inc. in Holyoke as well. When you cut staff in the classroom and in transportation, you will see increase in behavioral issues. In the program that I worked for, we did process and mediation with our students so they could identify triggers in their behaviors. Many of the triggers happened during transport because we bused students in from just different districts. You're really doing a disservice to the students, also when you do not abide by the IEP, which is federal law. So, please fully fund our schools. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Patricia Sensor, 36 Newcombe Lane. I'm one of those bad people. I was on the petition thing. I collected signatures. Since then, all we've heard is bad things said to us. It was our right to do this, to take the signatures. It's our right to be against it. We can have a brand-new library built in Irving for $4 million, but ours has to be $21 million. But the catch is, if you do the library, you also have to do the fire station because it's going to block the way. So, nobody's talking about all that extra money. All we get is harassment from the other side. My husband was told he was a child molester on Facebook. Okay? There's been things said by several of you councilors, and then you go ahead and delete them, but screenshots get them. It's been nasty. I want you to know that.
Thank you.
Garrett Connelly, 84 Congress Street. My son was raised going to that library, and we're all proud of our kids, but I tell you what, he brings me books now. And through those books, I learn what a failed culture we have here. You know, but anyway, I don't think that you can build the building that's there for the amount of money you want to borrow. I've built a lot of buildings in my life. I don't think you can build that building for $19 million. It's a very good library. So, that's all I want to say. I like the library. I think it's good that people are interested in libraries, but I, looking from the side, I don't watch television. And I think most people watch television, and they feel guilty about it, and then so they want to build a fancy library to make up for the fact that they don't study. There you go.
Thank you. Okay, moving on. Sure, I usually don't let people go twice, Mr. Clodier, but I'll let you go twice. It's only a minute.
I'll just be brief.
He's the only one. He's the only one I'm letting.
I wish everybody could get what they want. I really do. But I think what the town has to look at is, can they afford it? And it's up to you to either have the town vote on the important issue of the library, because then you don't have to feel guilty if it's voted on one way or the other that you don't agree upon, and it won't be your decision, it'll be the town's decision. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Philip Elmer DeWitt, 28 Chestnut Hill. I just didn't want this to end on an anti-library vote. The library's a good thing. Build it.
Thank you.
Jessica Pollak, 69 Norwood Street. I wasn't planning to speak because I've spoken about the library before. I really believe that it will only be a benefit to the community, and I think that we should support the process that has already happened. Please do not rescind your vote and bring it to a referendum as soon as possible. I also come to you as the school librarian for Greenfield High School to ask that you fully fund the schools. I know how important all of the services that the schools provide are to our students. I think that it is imperative that we, as a parent in this district, that we provide the students with the resources that they need, including the teachers. We lose teachers all the time to higher-paying districts, and it's a travesty. We have an amazing faculty, an amazing faculty that I am proud to send my daughter to the schools here, and I want you to remember that investing in our schools, investing in our public library will raise property values in this town, and that is a benefit to this town. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all. I'm going to close the public comment now and move on to the public hearings and second readings. Councilor Wheeler.
In accordance with Home Rule Charter, the Greenfield City Council will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, May 15th, 2019, at 7:00 PM at the Greenfield High School, I'm going to read that because that's where we are. To receive public input on the following, the sum of $9,965 be transferred from the reserve fund to the audit account 01001-3605301. The following sums be appropriated from the contractual stabilization fund and/or stabilization fund to fund retroactive provisions of contract agreement. United Public Service Employees Union, DPW, and Central Maintenance, $99,386.75. Greenfield Police Union, Mass. Cop Local, 470 Unit A, $31,760.72. The City Council will consider these two items on Wednesday, May 15th, 2019, at 7:00 PM at Greenfield High School. Materials can be obtained from the City Clerk's Office, 14 Court Square, from 8:30 AM to 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday, or phone 413-772-1555, extension 6163. Karen Reno, Greenfield City Council President. Public hearing, in accordance with Home Rule Charter, the Greenfield City Council will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, May 15th, 2019, at 7:00 PM at Greenfield High School to receive public input on the following FY20 capital budget. The sum of $90,000 be appropriated from the Building Maintenance Stabilization Fund for City Hall brick and chimney repairs. The sum of $65,000 be appropriated from capital stabilization for the replacement of SCBA cylinders for the firefighters. The sum of $550,000 be appropriated to hire the architect and engineering firms to develop plans for a new fire station. The sum of $25,000 be appropriated for roof leak repairs at the Greenfield Middle School and the Four Corners. The sum of $100,000 be appropriated for asbestos remediation at Four Corners, closets, cubbies, and Federal Street School tiles, in accordance with the HIRA plan set forth by the district. The sum of $80,000 be appropriated for the replacement of stair treads in the middle school. The sum of $125,000 be reassigned from the excess funds of the Hurricane Irene bond to replace one elevator at Federal Street School. The sum of $30,000 be appropriated to replace guardrails. The sum of $120,000 be appropriated for repair design for the Wiley-Russell Dam. The sum of $111,000 be appropriated for the design and engineering of Sanderson Street. The sum of $175,000 be appropriated to repair and repave Green River Road from Plain Road to Eunice Williams Drive. The sum of $30,000 be appropriated for the replacement of the Greenfield Middle School playground equipment. The sum of $550,000 be appropriated for the Sewer Enterprise Fund portion of the water meter replacement program. The sum of $100,000 be appropriated for sewer main replacement and repairs. The sum of $300,000 be appropriated for sewer inflow and infiltration evaluation and repairs. The sum of $675,000 be appropriated for the replacement of the Lyden Woods Pumping Station. The sum of $4,100,000 be appropriated to build an anaerobic digester. The sum of $600,000 be appropriated for the Water Enterprise Fund portion of the water meter replacement program. The sum of $100,000 be appropriated for water main replacement and repair. The Greenfield City Council appropriate the amount of $150,000 to purchase installation-related equipment for G-SET expansion and customer installation. FY20 operating budget, legislative, $72,112. Executive, $253,994. Financial administration, $1,026,324. Operations support, $821,297. Licensing and registration, $241,537. Land use and development, $117,027. Other general government, $1,679,345. Public safety, $6,818,442. Education, $19,873,138. Public works, $2,904,227. Human services, $872,190. Culture and recreation, $832,592. Debt service, $2,304,336. Miscellaneous, $13,465,359. Appropriate $1,756,616 for the FY2020 water budget. Appropriate $2,581,259 for the FY2020 sewer enterprise budget. Appropriate $1,116,744 for the FY2020 G-SET enterprise budget. Establish spending limits on revolving funds not to exceed $410,000. The City Council will consider the same on Wednesday, May 22nd, 2019, at 7:00 PM at High School Cafeteria, 21 Bar Ave. Materials can be obtained from the City Clerk's Office, 14 Court Square, from 8:30 AM to 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday, or by phone, 413-772-1555, extension 6163. Karen Reno, Greenfield City Council President.
Public hearing is now open on these matters before us at 8:25. Councilor Wheeler, second reading.
Thanks for the break. City Council, second reading, May 15th, 2019. The sum of $9,965,000 be transferred from the reserve fund to the audit account 01001-3605301. The following sums be appropriated from the contractual stabilization fund and/or stabilization fund to fund retroactive provisions of contract agreement. United Public Service Employees Union, DPW, and Central Maintenance, $99,386.70, excuse me, 75 cents. Is this correct? Point of information, or, Madam President, we have a note from the City Clerk earlier this week that second reading for some of these would be on the 22nd. Just before I continue, can someone confirm that the reading for these is meant to be tonight? I'm going to check my notes.
I think it could be done either. If you want a break, or in other words, not to have to read the whole thing, we could do it at the end of the night, too.
I'll just get it over with.
So this is the time for a bathroom break?
Yeah. All right, where was I? To fund retroactive provisions of contract agreement, United Public Service Employees Union, DPW, Central Maintenance, $99,386.75. Greenfield Police Union, Mass. Cop Local, 470 Unit A, $31,760.72. FY20 capital budget, the sum of $90,000 be appropriated from the Building Maintenance Stabilization Fund for City Hall brick and chimney repair. The sum of $65,000 be appropriated from the contractual capital stabilization fund for the replacement of SCBA cylinders for the firefighters. The sum of $550,000 be appropriated for roof leak repairs at the Greenfield Middle School and at the Four Corners School. Sum of $100,000 be appropriated for asbestos remediation at Four Corners, closets, cubbies, Federal Street School tiles, in accordance with the HIRA plan set forth by the district. The sum of $80,000 be appropriated for the replacement of stair treads in the middle school. The sum of $125,000 be reassigned from the excess funds of the Hurricane Irene bond to replace one elevator at Federal Street School. The sum of $30,000 be appropriated to replace guardrails. The sum of $120,000 be appropriated to repair Wiley-Russell Dam, excuse me, for the design thereof. The sum of $111,000 be appropriated for the design and engineering of Sanderson Street. The sum of $175,000 be appropriated to repair and repave Green River Road from Plain Road to Eunice Williams Drive. The sum of $30,000 be appropriated for the replacement of Greenfield Middle School playground equipment. The sum of $550,000 be appropriated for the Sewer Enterprise Fund portion of the water meter replacement program. The sum of $100,000 be appropriated for sewer main replacement and repairs. The sum of $300,000 be appropriated for sewer INI evaluation and repairs. The sum of $675,000 be appropriated for the replacement of Lyden Woods Pumping Station. The sum of $4,100,000 be appropriated to build an anaerobic digester. The sum of $600,000 be appropriated for Water Enterprise Fund portion of the water meter replacement program. The sum of $100,000 be appropriated for water main replacement and repair. The Greenfield City Council appropriate the amount of $150,000 to purchase installation-related equipment for G-SET expansion and customer installation. FY20 operating budget, legislative, $72,112. Executive, $253,994. Financial administration, $1,026,324. Operations support, $821,297. Licensing and registration, $241,537. Land use and development, $117,027. Other general government, $1,679,345. Public safety, $6,818,442. Education, $19,873,138. Public works, $2,904,227. Human services, $872,190. Culture and recreation, $832,592. Debt service, $2,304,336. Miscellaneous, $13,465,359. Bringing us to a total operating budget of $51,282,170.
$51 million.
Let me read that properly.
Thank you, Councilor Wheeler, and about four more. The water budget? On page three.
Oh, I specifically have a note that Kathy says to read that at our annual budget on the 22nd.
Okay, great. Thank you. So the public hearing is now open. If anybody wants to speak specifically on the matters of the budget, and again, there's going to be a ways and means budget deliberation tomorrow night, and the entire council will be voting- be voting on the budget a week from today. Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing then, because we're moving on to motions and orders and resolutions at about 8:32. So, Councilor Ellis, would you do me the favor of reading the motions for the library? Because this did not go to any committee.
Sure, I'm honored. Yes.[626.29][626.29](Laughter). Move that it be ordered to approve citizens' referendum petition regarding Council Order Number 19-50 under Section 7-8A of the Greenfield City Charter.
Motion's been made and seconded. So this is the motion that would approve the petition that we were handed in, and we do have Town Attorney with us tonight. If anybody cares to ask Attorney Quinn a question, you can direct it right to Attorney Quinn. You don't have to direct it towards me, and then direct it towards Attorney Quinn. This is a majority vote. Councilor Ellis?
Just as a point of information, should it read 19-050, since that is the order number that's referenced in the petition and on our paperwork? I don't know if that zero matters.
I don't know if that zero matters anyhow, but we can show for the record that we inquired about it, and if the zero matters, we'll make it matter. Councilor Dolan?
Just considering the substantial crowd in front of us, I was wondering if Attorney Quinn might be willing to just give a brief summary of the findings with relation to approving the petition.
Sure, I'm going to give you my microphone.
Sure, let me just. So, yeah, in the letter that I submitted to the council, I noted, for example, that the language of 78A of the charter reads literally that the council, as an initial matter, must, when presented with a petition that's been properly signed by the number of voters that meets the threshold in 78A, that the council has to take a vote to approve. And that's what the language says. That language was added by virtue of an amendment or a change back in the 2016-2017 period by the state legislature. And as I pointed out in my legal opinion, we had a chance to review the legislative background to that bill, and we were hoping to find some evidence that that change about the council approving the petition was somehow intended with some minutes of a meeting or a legislative committee meeting. This change that appeared, again, wasn't consistent with what the council had wanted in terms of the change to that provision, and we found no evidence of what the legislative intent was. As a matter of fact, the evidence that we uncovered seemed to indicate that the legislature may not have viewed the changed language as a substantive change to 78A. They thought they were just tinkering with some language. So, to make a long story short, my opinion, looking at that legislative history, at the case law, the legal precedent in the Commonwealth, my suggestion as to the prudent course for the council to take is to approve the -- take a vote on approving the petition as to form, because literally the language talks about the council having to approve the petition. And then, secondly, moving on to take a motion to -- entertain a motion to rescind, and then going through that process, as stated in the 78A. Thank you.
Councilor Mass?
Attorney Quinn, I'm sorry, I've read through this a number of times. Can you point to me -- point me out to where exactly the language is of the council voting to approve? It says in 78, it says, "If not later than 30 days after the date which the city council has voted to approve a petition addressed to the city council." That's not referencing the measure that was passed by the council?
As I read that language, it says literally, "If not later than 30 days after the date in which the council or school committee has voted to approve a petition," excuse me, "has voted to approve a petition," and then the language in this section of the charter then goes into great detail what that petition is. It's a referendum petition seeking to challenge a previous measure of the council. The original language, back before 2016, and I don't have it literally, I don't have the previous language here, had read, "If not later than," I'm just sort of paraphrasing now, "then 30 days after the date in which the city council, the school committee, has approved a measure, a petition is filed, et cetera, et cetera." That's what the original language read. Right, for some reason, and again, we have, there's no indication of why this language appears this way in the charter. It was enacted by the legislature. We don't know when it was. We think it was during the preceding, it was either on the floor of the Senate, but there's no evidence of why that any measure wording was taken out. It wasn't consistent with what the council wanted originally. We were hoping to find some evidence of the legislative intent, but we couldn't.
Councilor Wheeler?
So, as an elected official, I generally presume that statutes say what they mean and mean what they say, but I think that I've been, I've become convinced in this case, first of all, let me step back for a second. I was quoted in the paper as saying that it's clear that this piece of the charter is messed up, and I think that anyone who's looked at it will probably agree. And I do absolutely believe that we should take steps to clarify it. That said, I believe that in cases, I've become convinced that in cases where it seems clear that a statute contains a defect, which this one would seem to, there's legal precedent to interpret legislative intent, which, as Attorney Quinn said, you know, we cannot exactly establish, but common sense shows that the legislative intent is to allow for a referendum petition. So I think it's only valid and proper that we vote to approve this petition. I don't think the people who signed this petition and put it forward are bullies. I think, personally speaking, I vehemently disagree with it. I viscerally disagree with it. You could use pretty much any number of V-words, voraciously, vociferously. I won't go on, because I'm still tired from that second reading. But I think we should applaud them for exercising their democratic right, and I will be voting to approve this petition.
Any other comments? None? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Councilor Mass abstained, for the record. So, moving on, Councilor Ellis, I'm going to have you read all of them.
Move that it be ordered pursuant to the Greenfield City Charter, Section 7-8, that the following order number FY 019-050, approved by the council on March 20, 2019, be rescinded upon recommendation of, quote, "upon recommendation of the mayor that the sum of $19,541,296 be appropriated for the construction of a new public library, and to meet said appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the mayor is hereby authorized to borrow said sum of $19,541,296 pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 7, Subsection 3, or any other enabling statute, and the mayor is hereby authorized to apply for, contract for, accept, and expend any federal and/or state grants available for this project to be used to reduce the within appropriation and further, the mayor is authorized to take any action necessary to carry out the intent and purpose of these projects."
Motion's been made and seconded. Do we have any discussion? Councilor Wheeler?
I just wanted to respond, to take this opportunity to respond to one public comment, which was that the Irving Library cost $4 million, and I just wanted to point out that the population of Irving is 1,800 people, and the population of Greenfield is nearly 18,000. And thank you so much, library people and mayor, for not proposing a $40 million library. Imagine what that would have looked like.
Councilor Dolan?
I'd just like to take a moment to recognize that we have in front of us a petition with 400 signatures gathered over the course of a month. I do remember an evening not too long ago, when there were more than 400 people in this room wearing green shirts and asking that we build a new library. We managed to get those people together in the same place on a snowy evening. So I firmly believe that this library is the will of the community. I hope that when this eventually goes on the ballot, the folks who are against it will accept it as a democratic process, and I will not be voting to rescind.
Any other discussion? Councilor Mass?
Thank you. I think I've probably been harder hit than most councilors over the course of the last month by representatives on both sides, hoping that I might switch my vote. Let me say to those people out there who think that the people who collected signatures, first of all, I don't think there's anyone who tried harder to stop the whole signature collection process than I. I was on the phone with Town Attorney, with Mark Smith, with the mayor, with the town clerk, many people trying to clarify the issues related to the charter. That said, I'm the one who redrafted 7-8 of the charter and did not include those changes. Those were, in fact, a Scribner's error, or were done by the legislature without consultation to the charter. It's always been, at least since the time that Councilperson chaired the Charter Commission, the intent to have a referendum procedure in our charter. And that was to allow a strong minority to, say, put the brakes on and pause on something. It was not what I wanted to happen, because I wanted a compromise to happen. But I can promise you that these are not bullies. These are the people who are collecting, out there collecting signatures and advocating for no on the library are people who would prefer not to be involved in the process at all. I have been involved for over 20 years in municipal government in Greenfield, and the thing that I can tell you is the vast majority of people, particularly people who think, like I do, about, you know, taxes and the cost of spending, do not speak out. The fact that, as many of them are showing up with signs today and spoke at this meeting and put their names down on a petition is hugely unusual, and that's because when you speak out with an unpopular opinion in this community, you are ostracized. Kids, the parents of your children, parents of your children's friends don't necessarily want them to play with your kids. And people don't shop in your shops, or your restaurants, or your businesses. It's happened to me personally. I've seen it happen to many other people. And so most people stand back on the sidelines, they cast their ballot, and they hope that the person, the people that they elected, will vote the way they wanted them to. I think this is an unusual situation. I think most people knew that, for myself, I've always been opposed to the library from even applying for the grant application, because I thought it was too big. That was exacerbated by the resignation of Councilor Lobach, their duly-elected representative who was clearly against the library. These are people who believed that they had elected representatives who were going to do something, one thing, and did something else. And so they felt disenfranchised, and they stepped up, and they collected not the minimum number that they needed. And mind you, 2.5% is the increased amount. We bumped it up. They went out and collected over, it was 4%, that's more than you need to run for Town Council, that's more than you need to run for Mayor, that's more than you need to run for State Rep or State Senator, you know, but for a county, see? And I'm fully convinced these people would have collected, if we had had meet at 10%, they would have kept collecting until they got their 10%. That does not mean it represents a majority of the people of Greenfield. We'll have to find that out. But I applaud people for participating in democracy, both those people who've worn green shirts and come to our many public hearings. And just like I said last year at the split tax debate, when we had a roomful of business leaders who were complaining about their taxes that I haven't seen since, that you need to be here more often than when it affects you personally, and I hope we'll continue to see them. That said, I made a commitment to my colleagues, and I'm going to stand by my vote and vote to uphold the decision of the council for the library and let the voters make a decision.
Councilor Ricketts?
I also agree that the people who are doing the petition, I don't believe they're bullies. I think the hard part for me was all the months, many, many months, actually years, but many months of meetings. And I know that if you come into a room without a green shirt, it would be overwhelming, but if you didn't come into the room, you didn't even know those green shirts were here. And I know that people find us when they have something to tell us about anything. I'm talking about when their street is not plowed as quick as they'd want. We get many emails, and I just felt like the group of folks who put this together and signed it, I just keep thinking about what impact they would have made had they even banded together and spoke in front of us at any one of the numerous meetings. That's what would make this not so shocking now. So, as a counselor, fighting daily to understand everything that I'm doing each time I'm at these meetings, because doing the budget is no joke. And so I guess it's so upsetting for me to hear people say they're doing this just because of the money and for the taxes, and it's something I fully understand and I can get behind until they add the Senate's, or we'll sue the city. Then that means all of a sudden, then the money doesn't matter to you, because when you sue the city, you're suing yourselves, too. I mean, it's got to get paid somehow. So, we're always open, and I guess for me, this petition meant, why weren't these people heard? What did I ever do that made it so somebody wouldn't want to speak with me? And I know, I've been on that other side. I have been someone who went to door-to-door and collect petition for when I wanted the big box. And believe me, I went to houses of people who absolutely didn't want it. So I know the feeling, and I know when I brought it in front of a council that wasn't totally pro-growth, what it felt like. So I do understand it, but I guess it's maybe my conviction, or maybe it's, no one's going to stop me. None of you are going to stop me when I actually want something. And so I hope that you know now that you can call and you can email. If you don't want to come to the meetings, it's not enough of an excuse for me. I'm sorry. If I can recover from a stroke and get myself here somehow, you can pick up a phone and So, from the beginning, and I've wanted to do a special election months, a few months ago, because I felt like I wanted to make sure everybody was heard. I'm scared what happens when the town overwhelmingly comes out, and what happens if they vote for the library? Then what will you do next? We know, we have people in town who have heard overwhelming votes and decided not to listen to the people. I hope that you're going to be different about this vote. Oh my God, please don't lose the thought, I have one more thing to say.[1794.85][1794.85](Laughter). So, I, I wanna do what's best for the community. I wanna make sure that everyone is heard. I would love to say that I want a special election as soon as possible. That one is a hard decision for me because it means it costs us money and we have to hurt, we have to hit a certain percentage. If we don't get that percentage out, even if it passes overwhelmingly, it fails. Because that percentage of people have to come out to vote. Again, there's a big part of me that I'm not really concerned. But it's risky. I remembered my last point. And I think somebody said it from the audience tonight. I'm telling you, I really work too damn hard. And I'm not gonna sit here, month after month, and vote on all these agenda items and all these budget items so four hundred people can overturn the work. I want you to really think about all of this tonight. I need you to go and think how you best serve the community as well. Come to the town clerk's office and take out papers. Run for office. You know why I get to sit here and say that to you? 'Cause that's what I did to earn the right to sit where I am right now. That's why I can make these decisions. So, I don't wanna hear from people out there saying, "I don't think the council should have the right to do it." I, I earned the right to do this. I listened to lots of people. I listened to hundreds of people. Last night, when I got home from work, I get out of work at five, I'm in bed at 5:15, we had, you tell me if I'm wrong, a hundred and six emails last night. I read every one of them. Every one of them. "What did you do last night? I want this to be equal. I want us to work together. I will do anything for Greenfield, anything for Greenfield. But I will do more if we do it together."
Councilor Pytham?
I just wanna say thank you to everybody that came out to speak and to those of you that went out to collect signatures of the petition. It is not an easy thing. It's not an easy thing to be up here and having to make, um, decisions that we make, whether it's yes or no. Um, it, it's really hard. And people come up here and they talk with passion. Um, sometimes passion in a person's voice sounds a little aggressive, a little mean. Um, so, we talk about getting along and being friends and friendly with our neighbors. I think that we can all be a little more friendlier to people that take that step to come out to actually speak to a big crowd like this. Because honestly, we don't usually have a big crowd like this unless it's a big, big vote. Um, so, again, thank you for coming out to speak, and I hope this encourages you to come out more. I hope that you can encourage your friends and neighbors to, to, um, take part, maybe start watching it on TV, but also get him here because this is a big deal. Um, hearing your, your voice, hearing, hearing your concerns for town of Greenfield, it's a big deal. So, some of us do hear, um, hear you speak also. So, thank you again, all of you.
Councilor Dolan?
Um, I just, I wanna make a, a quick, general comment and push back a little bit against this narrative of bad library folks bullying people. And I wanna do that in kind of the most candid way I can. Um, one of the things that has shocked me the most about being in office is the level of heat and vitriol that occurs in town politics in this town. Um, certainly, yes, I have seen it from library supporters directed at people who don't support the library. That is not the only direction it goes. Um, we have had incidents of racism and homophobia, um, against members of the council in the past. Um, I personally have, you know, as a working stiff volunteer legislator, been called a fat cat, been accused of being corrupt, been compared to Hitler, zero to Hitler in no time at all, um, and more frequently to Trump recently. Um, I, I would ask that everybody make an effort to be more civil on actually all sides of, of this issue and the issues that may be coming up in the future. I think a, a more civil, a debate with a more civil tone, uh, ends up being more productive in the long run.
Any other, oh, Councilor Sun. Thank you for waving. It's hard for me to see everybody at the end. And then, Councilor Mayo.
I've tried to do as best I can. This is the first time I've ever served on the, in, for the community. I served for the country, but I've, this is a small part. Um, sometimes there, and people don't agree with the way I, um, say things or the way I vote. But I vote for all the people, not just a few. There's some people that don't agree with the library, but, and they don't come out. But that doesn't mean they don't care about the town. They care about the town. Like Penny said about the signatures, for the growth of the town or for big box and everything, I was out there getting signatures too. And there are a lot of people that signed, but there's some that didn't. But they don't mean that they didn't want the store in town. But also, um, people don't know how much, some people don't know how much it is to sit and take criticism as well as take the nice things. And, um, like I said, I, I've been criticized a lot, but it doesn't mean I don't care for everybody. I care for every single person that is in town. And I've lived in the towns for seventy years. So, I, I know a lot of people in town. And, um, I just feel that everything should be equal, should be able to state their position. If they wanna vote, why not let them vote for it? Because it's their money as well as everybody else's.
Thank you, Councilor Sun. Um, Councilor Mayo.
Thank you, ca, President, Madam President. Um, I want to speak to, um, what somebody had said in the audience. They had said that there was, uh, they were citing a dollar figure of how much it would cost to repair or make the, uh, the library more handicapped, accessible. And it was, uh, the number was cited as sixty-four thousand dollars. That was not a, that was an estimate. That's not a hard and fast, uh, figure, um, uh, that was, that's supposed to be cited for specifically for updating the, uh, or making the library more accessible. Um, so, that's, that's one thing. The second thing is, I took a wheelchair challenge, um, a couple of months ago, um, because I was interested, I was, I had here, I grew up in Greenfield, I knew about the library, I knew how tight the quarters were. And, uh, I knew that it was, uh, difficult for people of, with people with wheelchairs and, and, um, adaptive equipment to get in and out of the library. So, when this library challenge came about, I took it. And, uh, I got a couple of scraped knuckles, um, getting into the, um, the elevator, which is, which was extremely difficult. But what was more difficult was getting into the men's room. Um, for anybody who has, uh, uh, any kind of, uh, handicap getting and they are, are in a regular-sized wheelchair, it is an impossibility for them to get into the bathroom using that wheelchair or using any wheelchair unless it's a child's wheelchair. I did, I didn't use the child's wheelchair. I used a regular-sized wheelchair. But, uh, and there was four of us councilors who took that wheelchair challenge. And, uh, I just wanna make sure that those people who feel like they can't use the library because, and there's been, been many people to, have, that have testified before this committee or before this, uh, council, that, um, they cannot even get into the library because, um, they, they just can't use their wheel, their wheelchair won't fit. They can't get into the library, they can't, and once they're, the only way you can get into the access to the, uh, elevator is through the back of the, um, the library. And that's also where the men's room is, uh, also. So, in order for, if you can't get into the library, you can't access the main floor of the, of the library as well. So, um, it just makes it extremely difficult. So, I just wanted to speak to, first off, that's an inaccurate figure, that sixty-four thousand. Um, and those people, um, who speak about a, a, a library of being of lesser prices, I went to the, uh, the library that was in, um, Athol, and they had, uh, they had done a really good job. But they, they were not just, uh, they were just renovating the library. It wasn't a brand, brand-new library like the one that we need here. Um, and just passing, I, I can't conceive of us ever, the town of passing, uh, passing away nine point four million dollars. And it just seems to me ridiculous. Talk about, uh, um, not, not looking at the financial picture is, who says no to nine point four? So, that's what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Mayo. Any other discussion? Councilor Alice?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, so, I'll make it quick. I can, I can count noses. And, uh, I can see that this is headed for an, uh, a ballot question. And I, I believe it belongs at the ballot box. Uh, I believe that there are many people who have asked for this to be on the ballot, including some councilors on, uh, currently still on the council. Um, when, when I was the presiding officer of the council, we, uh, actually took up a motion and it was voted down by some of the very councilors that are here tonight. Um, and that was to put it on the ballot about two and a half years ago. Um, I think it belongs on the ballot, so I will, uh, vote, uh, in, uh, the negative so that it can go on to the ballot. And I believe, um, this project, along with the fire department, which is, uh, for all intents and purposes, one project, even though we'd like to separate it, you can't separate it because you cannot build the library without building a new fire department, has a total price tag, almost exactly what our portion of the high school was, which had to be a prop-two-and-a-half override. And that had to go on the ballot because prop-two-and-a-half overrides have to go on the ballot. So, the point here is, this amount of money is worthy of, of being on the ballot, and I believe that the citizens should decide this. And it would be binding, and therefore, um, we would have to abide by whatever the citizens, um, decide. There is no, there is nothing after a binding referendum that anybody can do to, uh, reverse that decision. Um, so, a binding referendum is binding, and that will bind us. So, I, I think it should go on the ballot. Thank you.
Is there any more discussion before we vote? Okay, so, a no, just to be clear, a no on this, um, question means you wanna keep the vote the way it was and then we move on to putting it on the ballot? If this, if the majority of people vote yes, it's, it doesn't go to the ballot. It means that the library gets defeated among us right now. So, is that clear? Yes. Okay, good. Um, so, we're gonna do a roll, call, vote. And clerk will call the roll.
Councilor Sun?
Please come back.
Councilor Burson?
No.
Councilor Alice?
No.
Councilor Pytham?
No.
Councilor Dolan?
No.
Councilor Gilmore?
No.
Councilor Wheeler?
No.
Councilor Mayo?
No.
Councilor Mass?
No.
Vice President Ricketts?
No.
President Renault, would you like to vote?
Uh, no.
The motion fails.
Sun?
Oh, oh, sorry. Councilor Sun. The motion still fails. So, so that means that the vote stands of the town council, and now we move on to, um, the referendum. And, um, Councilor Alice, would you do this again?
Um, I actually have a question about this particular motion.
And I have a feeling it's for the attorney.
Yeah, before, before I read it.
Sure.
Is it true that the charter specifies out the exact language of a question that is to be posed based on a citizen referendum?
Yeah, well, yes. The, well, the, the, uh, section of the charter, which is incorporated in this process is, uh, seven dash seven G, which also applies to referendum petitions. I think what's important to note is that in the charter, it says the ballots used when voting on a measure or part their protest against, since we're dealing with a referendum, uh, proposed by the voters shall, under this section, shall contain a question in substantially the following form. So, the question has to be substantially in the following form, which gives some leeway to the, to the council to formulate the question in a way that's not very confusing to the, uh, to the voters.
Charter language, or?
Just that, yeah, the charter language. Is it, is it in here? I'll re, I'll read the motion, and we can, we can debate after the motion's been read. Uh, move that it be ordered to the Greenfield, uh, actually.
What about the date?
Yeah, well.
So, I'm gonna ask the town attorney this question. So, my assumption is that, um, whoever makes the motion, um, could potentially plug in a date, and then we would debate that along with the date. Um, Councilor Alice, I've given you the privilege of choosing the first date, um, because you're my reader usually. Um, and I wanna ask Attorney Quinn if that is, in fact, how we can do this. Um, and, yes, can we just plug in a date and vote on it?
When you say plug in a date, a date for the special election, is that, well, you could do that. I think what you, the council needs to be aware of is that in scheduling a date for a special election, if that's the course the council wants to proceed, the one parameter to keep in mind is that if you were to approve the ballot question today, um, the earliest you could schedule an election under state law would be thirty-five days from today. Um, I would, I would add too, and this is just, you know, based on my conversation with the city clerk last week, she indicated to me that that's just sort of a, a very conservative kind of estimate. She would take, need about, if there was a special election scheduled, she would need at least about a two-month period, um, to complete the special election balloting process.
I, I believe that answers the question. So, it was, would be my hope that some, in making the motion, that if you plugged in the general election date, then you plug it in, and then we could debate that.
Is the general election date November the fifth? Am I correct?
I have my calendar with me.
I believe it is. I just wanna make sure.
All you people have calendars on your phones.
Uh, move that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council directs the following question be placed upon the official ballot at, at the November general election to be held on November, what did I say, fifth? Fifth. Ballot question, quote, "Shall the following measure, which was proposed to be rescinded by voters in a citizen referendum petition, take effect?" End quote. Quote, "Upon recommendation of the mayor that the sum of nineteen million five hundred forty-one thousand two hundred ninety-six dollars be appropriated for the construction of a new public library, and to meet said appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the mayor is hereby authorized to borrow said sum of nineteen million five hundred forty-one thousand two hundred ninety-six dollars pursuant to Massachusetts General laws, chapter forty-four, section seven, subsection three, or any other enabling statute, and the mayor is hereby authorized to apply for contract or accept and expend." and expend any federal and/or state grants available for this project to be used to reduce the within appropriation, and further, the mayor is authorized to take any action necessary to carry out the intent and purpose of these projects." End quote. Summary, yes vote would uphold the city council vote above and allow funding for a new public library. A no vote would rescind the city council vote and not allow funding for a new public library.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Motion's been made in second. And Counselor Pytham?
Um, I, I'm sorry, I didn't hear the November 5th, 2019. Does it matter if it's November 5th as opposed to November 5th, 2019?
Accept that as a friendly amendment.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. November 5th, 2019. So the motion that's on the table right now is to have, not a special election, but to bring this to the ballot for the November election. And discussion. Counselor Dolan?
So for me, it seems like, given the last two votes, we are not debating the existence of, of this question on the ballot. We are debating when. And for me, and the specific language as well. For me, in terms of when, this is a matter of arithmetic. This petition by these 400 residents is every day imposing costs upon the city. Construction inflation is a real thing. We had an estimate somewhere around $40,000 a month. That delay is costing us. So given the cost of a special election being $10,000 to $15,000, for me, the arithmetic would suggest we should do this as soon as possible, and that's the fiscally responsible decision for me.
Counselor Sund, and then Counselor Ellis.
As far as, how do we know it's only going to be, you know, $40,000 or whatever? The only way we could really tell is find out from the construction people what exactly the costs will be. That's the only way we can really tell. The head of the, the ones that's going to, in charge of building, doing the building and everything. Because you got the cost of employing the construction people, plus the equipment and everything, and you want to know exactly what's, what's going to happen.
Counselor Wheeler?
Madam President, would it be acceptable to you to call Dan Pallada to the floor to confirm construction numbers?
Yeah, do it slowly.
Mr. Pallada, could you come up? No, it's okay. I'm, I'm only going to, I'm only going to allow for a couple questions. We are in deliberations, and construction costs, we've had time to go over this, and I, I think, I think anything is going, at chairs, we talked about this, and the mayor had said that costs can be renegotiated, so I'll allow one question.
I, I was, if I still have the floor, I was just wanting, hoping, Mr. Pallada, that you could answer Vern's question and confirm whether 40 or 43,000 is the, is a reasonable number for the inflationary escalation costs in 2019.
It would, it would be my opinion that in 2019, that the inflation number would be more like 52,000 to 60,000. $40,000 would be reasonable for 18, and slightly less than 17.
Any other discussion? Counselor Ellis?
I remembered my question, and it's for Attorney Quinn. Am I correct in the statement that at a special election, it requires 25% turnout, but at a general election, it does not, there is no specific percentage turnout that is required? Is that correct?
If I could just take a look at the charter just for a moment. So if I could just answer your question, in the charter, 7-8, Section 7-8C, the language reads that if not placed before the voters at a regular biennial election, in order for the referendum to be binding upon the city, for the referendum to be binding on the city, 25% of the registered voters of the city shall vote on the, on the measure or issue placed before the city by citizens' referendum procedure. So I interpret that as meaning that in order for the referendum to succeed, 25% of the registered voters have to vote on the measure. That's the way the language appears.
Counselor Ellis?
So if there is not a 25% turnout at a special election, and the referendum does not succeed, where, where does that put it back? What does it reset it to? Does it reset it to our vote, or does it reset it to something else? I'm just, I just want to make sure we're all on the same page.
In my opinion, based on the literal language of that section, it would, the status quo would be maintained, so the original vote would still, would still take precedent, the March 20th vote of the council.
I want to, I'll, I'll call on other councilors, and I'm going to speak to the question of when to take the vote. So the, the motion on the floor is to have the vote in November. I agree that it should happen at the regular election because, for a couple different reasons. The 25% threshold, I'm not certain that we would actually reach that. I have changed my mind on that. There was a time when I thought we would reach that, and looking at the numbers of it, I don't think we will. And then if we don't reach that, I don't think it's going to end there. I think there have been other threats of people suing the town. Of course, anybody can, can sue the town at any time they want to over anything, but would this give them an issue to sue the town over? That's something to contemplate and think about. And we're the stewards of the town and the town money, and I, I would rather not see us do anything that would, would leave ourselves open to any legal action. I also, I want to, I want to address the question of, is this going to make the election about the library? We had, we've had other elections with other ballot questions, and those elections did not become about those ballot questions. The ballot question, of course, the candidates were asked their stances on, on those particular ballot questions, but it did not become about the ballot questions. There were three ballot questions on the last mayoral election, and the elections were about the people running for office. And I also think it's, it's the most fair thing to do, is when we know that the most amount of people are coming out to vote, to let the most amount of people have their say. And I'm, I am strongly in support of the library, but I still want to know what the most amount of people have to say about this process. I don't want to have to redo it. I don't want the town to get sued when we have a vote, a special election. I see your hand, and I will call you when I'm done. And lastly, in terms of the vote, in terms of the costs of, of how much the, the construction, we were told at chairs that just like with the garage, that could be renegotiated, that that was negligible. I believe this town would vote for a library if we have 50% of the voters or 100% of the voters coming out. So I'm, I'm just being a cautionary tale on this. And council will vote the way that they want to vote. And Counselor Mass, I think you are next.
Thank you. I tried to, two years ago, I tried to put this measure on the ballot as a non-binding referendum in the November ballot, and then when it was discussed as a special election prior to our, our vote to accept, I objected to that because we get low voter turnout at special elections, particularly special elections in June and July. Schoolchildren and their parents are on vacation and are out of town, the very people who are most likely to want this library. Senior citizens who are on fixed incomes are going to, more, more likely to be home to vote. It, it is a bad measure for the people who want the library to have a special election. More importantly, we want, we, we know more people show up at town elections, more people especially show up at mayoral elections. I have heard again and again, a majority of the people agree with me. Well, this is the way to find out, is to put it to the voters, when, when you have the best likelihood for the greatest turnout to find out whether or not those people are there. You know, I just heard $62,000 for the year. Well, you divide that by 12, and then you multiply it by three months, which is the end of July to the beginning of November, and that's $15,500. The cost of a election is $12,000. Might we, might it cost a little more in construction delay? Possibly. Are we really going to do anything during those months on the library? No, because we're going to be working on the fire station. That's what's going to happen. You can't build a library until you build a fire station. And so it isn't, it's going to have a marginal effect on, on the project. What is more likely to have effect on the project is the community dialogue we have about what's going to happen with the budget this year, and what's going to happen with taxes, and do we lay off teachers? Because I think there's going to be a problem if we're laying off teachers and building a big library. But all of those questions come together at the same time when you have candidates, not just for mayor, but for half the city council, and for a third of the school, for most of the school committee, coming up at the same time. I think it's the best, most appropriate time, and I hope that we will set this for a November election and give every possible citizen, including the citizens who are not yet 18 and eligible to vote, an opportunity to turn 18 or, and, and be registered in time for this election.
Come back to me. I'll pass.
I apologize for snapping at anybody for raising their hand while I'm speaking. It takes me off course.
I apologize.
So we both of all apologize. Counselor Burson?
It's very important to me that this comes to a conclusion sooner rather than later. I really believe in representative government, and this is a city, and we represent, represent the people. And our votes make, make a difference. I have a particular concern about the way this was presented in connection with the language of the, of the charter, because I could come up with more than one argument on the other side to say that the word "approved" means that we have the ability to turn down this petition. However, we have not turned down this petition, and one of the silent reasons is that we have come to a risk management decision that it is better to do this and essentially codify this particular decision than risk the litigation that might come about as a result of, of this determination. That litigation is a form of speech, but it's also a form of intimidation. And I, for one, do not want to be intimidated by somebody telling me, "Well, we're going to sue the town." Our decisions have to be made on what is presented to us. And what is presented to us sometimes is ambiguous. We don't have perfect facts on everything that we make a decision on. I don't know if it's going to cost $54,000 a month, but I rely on the people who do know, or at least who apparently have the information to make that determination. That amount of money on a monthly basis is, is a great deal of, of money. And I want to see this library be built, completed, finished, and furnished for the amount that is within this ballot, ballot question. So my view of this is to do it sooner than, than later. So I would support the special election in order to accomplish, the, accomplish the ability to move forward and get on with this. And if the people want this, let them come out and vote for it, and if the people do not want that, want it, let, let them come out and vote for it. There's always a reason not to go to the polls. My god, a parent died, I have to go on vacation. But if you, if you, if you want to make the government respond to you by essentially a ballot question on your, on your major, major issues, then come out and vote. But when I see the amount of money that is, that is being presented to us in view of delay, and I, I hear the appeal of, of the educational student-parent community about the loss of teachers, I'm very concerned about any dollar that we don't have to spend if we can functionally prevent, prevent it from being, from being spent. So that's why I believe that we should do this in a special election in the most effective way we can, and quickly. Because many of us are tired, not, not in, not in a, not in an uncivil way, but tired of, of having to come back and do this again, and again, and again. So I would, I would support Counselor Dolan's original presentment to put this on the ballot as soon as legally possible.
Thank you, Counselor Burson. And I would also remind councilors, if you want to amend this motion and pick a date that's at least 35 days out, that's, that is your right to do that, is to amend this motion. Counselor Dolan?
I just want to clarify, and I may look for a nod in the audience on this. I believe it is $60,000 per month and not per year in construction inflation. So if...
That's not what we were just told.
Yeah, so, yeah. I object to the deliberation.
Um, the deliberations don't take place with, with the audience. I'm sorry. Um, I, everything we were told at committee chairs was that it was speculative, and that it could be renegotiated. The only one I'll let speak to that at this point would be Mayor Martin, if you want
Yes, the, the common denominator has been used as 4% a year for inflation, so Dan Pallada said $62,000 a month. That would be the, the cost of increasing. At the chairs, I also said that whatever was lost during the period of negotiation and deliberation is something that would have to be renegotiated off the, the price of the building. So if you wanted to save the money you lost, you'd have to remove a window, a door, something like that.
Counselor Dolan?
So I just want to emphasize, so the, the month's difference between doing this in early July and doing it in early November amounts to about a quarter of a million dollars, and that's a quarter of a million dollars in value that we're losing from the library. And I am, I just don't know if I'm willing to accept that loss to entertain this petition.
I'll let the mayor respond to that if you want to, and then we'll go back to debate among the councilors.
I, I don't think I saw a question, or heard a question, and that.
No, I mean, just a response, that you agree with those figures.
Yes.
Okay. Counselor Mass. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Even at $65,000, which is the, one-third increase from what you were told at chairs, but even at $65,000, it's three months, the end of July to the beginning, I guess theoretically possible it could be in June, 35 days out, but ostensibly, we've talked with the clerk states, we're talking the end of July. End of July, the beginning of November is three months. That is, when you subtract out the cost of a special election, you're talking about $180,000. We're not talking about, it's still a substantial amount, don't get me wrong. As someone who's nickled and dimed everything in this town, it's not a insignificant amount. That said, it is certainly less than the cost of litigation. And I have every belief that there would be litigation if there were a special election and less than 25% of people turned out, because notwithstanding our excellent municipal council's opinion on that, it is an opinion that is open to interpretation and certainly could be litigated. And the real, what you don't want to have happen in this is to, if we have a special election, there's over 25% turnout, I don't think there's going to be an issue. But if you have a special election and there's less than 25% turnout, and someone's not happy with that, because what you got to understand is, this is referend, is a citizen-led process, and by putting this on the ballot in a special election, we are essentially, especially so close to a regular election, this isn't like it's two years ago that this happened, or a year ago that this happened. We are proactively making a statement that we are intending to put it on on a date where we know there's going to be a lower turnout. It's demonstrated that we, we know that there are going to be less people. Historically, special elections have had lower turnouts in Greenfield than general elections. And the recourse, as you're, what you're hearing is that the status quo goes, it goes back to the status quo. Well, that would be true in, under 7-7, which is a section of the charter that says, if a citizens bring a petition and we, and we don't pass it, and they can't get people to turn out, it, it doesn't pass. But this is different. This is, we took action, and they're objecting to it. And we are, they're objecting to something we, they're not asking for something, they're objecting to something we did, and then we take the, the course of action to put it on, on a date where it's less likely to get the 25%. I could easily see a litigation over that, and I can, if there is litigation over that, there's going to be at least a motion for, if not it to happen, a temporary restraining order on the expenditure of the funds. And let me tell you, Franklin Superior Court, you don't have a judge a lot of the time. And you're not going to get a decision on the temporary restraining, you're going to be lucky if you get a decision on the temporary restraining order, because you have this election in July, your lawsuit is, is filed in August. There are no judges in August in Franklin County. So, you're not going to get a hearing on the temporary restraining order until September, right? And if it goes into effect, this is going to go well past the November date. So, when you talk about the cost, right? The cost of having that $180,000 extra versus the cost of the litigation, which we have insurance providers that'll help pay for that, but our insurance rates will go up, and, but also the cost of the instruct, the construction inflation past November if we're stuck in litigation. And, and the bottom line is, we want people to vote, we want people to vote on this, and we want as many people as possible to vote on this. It's the right thing. I, I'm sympathetic to wanting to save, save every dime we can, but what I do know is, because I sat and asked question after question about the finances, is that there's an additional year built in to the construction inflation costs. Because I specifically asked the questions, if we run into a hangup on the fire station, what are we going to do? Well, guess what? It's raining, we've run into a hangup. And thank goodness, they built that money in, the money is in the budget, it's, would I rather save it if I could? Yes. But we're in a situation where now this has to go to a ballot, and if it's going to go to a ballot, it needs to go to the right one, and so that needs to be November. Thank you.
Counselor Gilmore?
So, I'm concerned about sending this to the November ballot. I was really kind of on the fence, I really had to spend a lot of time thinking about the pros and cons, because there are a lot of pros and a lot of cons. But I'm really getting irritated with the escalating demands. I mean, first it was, we need to pack the building with library supporters to get people to vote for the library. And then it was, they have to raise this much money, and then this, and then this, and now put it on the ballot, but not unless it's on the exact day that I want it to be. So, I think that it's fine to put it on the ballot. Honestly, I was upset about that in the beginning, but I care about, you know, democracy, I care about people getting to weigh in, and sort of decentralizing government a bit. But to say that we're going to get sued if we don't hold it on, like, do we have to hold it on, you know, someone's birthday? Is that like, how specific is this going to get before we're just past the fear of legisla, uh, sorry, litigation? I, I don't think that's fair. I don't think that's what it says in our town charter, and we've already questioned whether or not we have to accept the petition. I was generous, I have been very generous with, you know, allowing this to go to a vote. I don't think that we should say that we're being held to a November election, because someone might sue us if we hold it in July.
I'm going first to folks who haven't spoken yet. Anybody who hasn't spoken, I, does anybody, oh, Counselor Mayo?
Thank you, Chairman. Looking at the dates, it looks like we can't do anything less than 35 days out, and that, that's bringing us to June 5th at 30, at the earliest. Now, if we're doing, or, or, sorry, July. Okay, so, now I'm looking, I'm looking, trying to figure out my dates here. Oh, July, July 9th would be the second Tuesday of the month. Okay, so, so forget my June comment. Go, go for, go for July 9th. That's the soonest, because I think it needs to, there, there's some, there's a couple of different reasons for, for me, is, is I think we can meet the threshold, it's just because I think it's, it's become a thing in, in Greenfield, a special thing. And I think a 25% threshold, I think would be easy to, to be met, regardless of, of, I mean, people like me have, have pride in, in voting, and I hope people in this room have pride in voting, whether it's voting for someone here on this, or in this room, or a ballot question, is have, have pride in the vote, to follow up on the vote, take the vote. July 9th. Thank you.
Anybody who hasn't spoken? Okay. Okay, go ahead. Counselor Alice?
Does the clerk have, I know we received an email, but I got a new device, and IT has not provisioned my device yet. So, I, the email that was sent to the council regarding the number of people who voted at the biennial election last, I believe it was around 3,200 or something?
It was 2,932.
Which is not 25% of...
Or no. No, I don't have the number of who vote.
I believe, I believe if, if I remember the numbers, they were, they were close to, if not under, the 25% of registered voters. It was, well, if, if, if there's 11,000 registered voters in Greenfield, which there is, 25% of that would be 20, 2,700-ish. So, it's very, very close to the 25%. And this is a special election, that was a biennial election, so just, just caution that that potential exists.
So, Kathy had noted that as of the most recent biennial local election, so that was November 7th, 2017, the number of registered voters was 11,728. 25% of that is 2,932. I don't have how many. If I can get that number.
However, there was, there was a number of how many actually voted, and I believe that number was very close to that 2,900, if, I think it was 3,100. So, so 3,200 voted, so, and that was a biennial election. So, my, my point is, is that's perilously close to being under the 25%. And if it's a special election during the summer, when people are on vacation, I'm not sure we're going to get the 25%. So, I, I just wanted to, those were the numbers that we had been given, I wanted to just make sure we had that information.
Counselor Burson?
Please follow this logic. You are relying on town council, who's made, who's offered his opinion, that you've accepted. This is what you've relied on. You've relied on, on his opinion that said, "This should go to a vote." My best, my best advice to you is, you, it should go to a vote in spite of the ambiguity that exists in the charter. All right. So, we accepted that. Now he, now he presents the fact that if you have a special election, and we don't have the 25% number, this is what happens. So, it seems to me that, that what you're doing is you're resting your rock on basically this opinion. So, if you, if you do that, you follow the first part, and you follow the second part, and you rely on it, and you act on it. And you don't construct all these boogie people from everywhere and anywhere that they're not going to, they're not going to show up. You know what, folks? If you don't vote, that's a vote. That's a vote. It's a vote. So, it's really important to get this done, over with, started, one way or the other. And I'm not worried about somebody, somebody bringing, bringing a lawsuit. I can't imagine that, that a judge who, who is faced with these facts, one, the town took this, took this action based on advice of legal counsel, based on the interpretation of the charter that is clear in connection with the, with the vote, they called a special election in the ordinary course, and these were the results. Doesn't seem to me that too many, too many people are going to overtip that factual and legal basis. So, please, get on with it.
I agree with what Counselor Burson said. I also want to point out that we have an interesting conflict of narratives here, because on the one hand, we're talking about putting this on the ballot so the town can really decide, and I am 100% for that. I actually, at this point, firmly believe it was a strategic mistake not to put this on last year's ballot. I think that would have been the best course of action. So, we're talking about these high ideals of democracy, and simultaneously talking about making a decision because one person out there might file litigation against us. And that is profoundly anti-democratic. I do not want to make any kind of decisions out of that kind of fear. And furthermore, I don't know who in this community has the resources to sue the town over an issue like this, particularly an issue where the majority is so clear. So, I agree with Counselor Burson. We put it on the ballot, people can come out to vote if they want to.
I can add, remind councilors, that if you want an early election, you might think soon about making a motion to amend the motion. So, Counselor Wheeler?
Thank you, Madam President. I'm going to do exactly what you, you just said, and rather than have to speak to it, I'm going to just say an introductory, introductory piece, which is that the library, I believe, has a petition that was signed by about 1,400 residents. If the protest petitioners are correct, that they are in the clear majority, and that Greenfield does not want this, then they'll have no problem finding more than 1,400 people to vote at this election, which will bring us over the 25% margin. I will note, however, that this is certainly, as noted by Attorney Quinn, a legal way of moving forward either way. The burden of proof lies with the citizens attempting to overturn the will of our elected representatives, not with the ones voting to uphold the results of a comprehensive, seven-year-long democratic process. I move to amend the order by striking the words at a special, by striking the words at the November 5th, 2019, general election, and inserting the words at "a special election to be held on July 9th, 2019."
Okay, so the motion right now is for a special election on July 9th, 2019. Counselor Mass?
So, 1,400 people doesn't come close to reaching 25%. Doesn't come close. 25%, according to the clerk, is 2,932. The last biennial primary, this was the September election, this is the election where candidates, where you have the...
1,400 plus 1,400.
Yeah. Well, okay, that's still 2,800, and that's still short.
I'm saying there'll be more than that, because they'll have...
Counselors, one at a time, one person at a time.
Maybe everyone will show up. But reality is reality, and that is, in the last September election, 1,158 people showed up, and that was, that was when you had the most number of candidates running, the most people trying to get people to show up. Then you wean it down to the general election, but that's also where most people are paying attention, and that had 1,885. That is, that is what half of this council was elected with, that or less. The, the at-large candidates were elected with 1,000, it was in 885 voters casting a ballot, either for or against them, or skipping the ballot. That is not enough. But it would be enough if it was on a regular election. If it was at a special election, it won't. We had a special election for Franklin County Tech School bonding, that's the most recent special election we had. Less than 1% of the people of Greenfield showed up. Now, I'm not saying it's going to be 1%. I, I agree, there's a lot of people involved in this, I think there'll be a good spirited, organized effort on both parts. But certainly, less people will show up than will show up at the annual town election. I guarantee it. Fully guarantee it. I, I would bet the cost of the library itself, out of my personal pocket, that more people will show up at the regular town election. And we make decisions about possibility of litigation all the time. In fact, most of the opinion is about that we just took two votes based on legal strategy. And I think it is not, and, and that, I raised that for the purpose of talking about the cost, the cost of this. But the reason to have it in November is not because of the litigation, the reason to have it in November is because it's the right thing to do. That's because that's when we have elections, that's when people are expecting to have elections, that's when people are prepared for elections. Now, and it's more convenient for the citizens, because they're going to vote already. This is, this is about democracy. It's about giving a fair shake to both sides, so they both have an opportunity to put, forward their case to the voters. Counselor Leonovich is not with us anymore. We're not going to have a special election to fill his seat, we're going to appoint someone, and then he'll be, that seat will be filled at the regular town election. We're not going to do it in July. We just replaced a school committee member with Glenn Johnson, our council president went in and broke the gridlock at school committee, and I'm appreciative of her to be able to go in there and make our government work. But we're not having a special election for a school committee member in, in July. He'll be, that person will be elected at the regular annual town election. Our budget is $50,000. be elected at the regular annual town election. Our budget is $51 million. It's twice as much as the library. But we're going to wait for a regular town election to have 1/13 of this council represented by, actually, 2/13 of this council represented by elected officials. I think we can wait a couple of months to let democracy speak. I was willing to let this go through. I was willing to do the compromise. I'm fully supportive of it. And I intend to stand back in the election. But I think everybody deserves a fair shake, both sides, and that best happens at a November election. I hope that's what we do.
So, I think that if there's anyone who's under the impression that people are not paying attention to this issue, we are living in very different worlds. I think that we're going to get a very high turnout for a special election. I don't think it's going to be as high as our midterms. And I think that everybody's already made up their mind, so I'd like to call the question.
Second.
All in favor of calling the question?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so, this is the vote on the special election on July 9th. So this is the amendment to the main motion. So first, we're voting on the amendment. And it's going to be a roll call. So if you, so let me just clarify. I can see some, I see some faces wanting clarification. So if you want the November election, vote no. And if you want a July election, vote yes. Ready? Counselor Sund?
No.
Counselor Burson?
Yes.
Counselor Alice?
No.
Counselor Pythrom?
No.
Counselor Dolan?
Yes.
Counselor Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Counselor Mass?
No.
Vice President Ricketts?
Yes.
Madam President?
I don't think it matters.
Point of order. Madam President, you correctly pointed out at the beginning of this evening that these three measures did not go before committee chairs or go to committee. Our rules of procedure allow that any member can object to one measure being passed in its entirety in a single meeting. That is what's happening in this meeting, and therefore I object and ask for further objections.
Hang on a second. We're going to get some clarity on that. Say it again, Counselor Mass. I'm sorry I was paying attention to the vote count.
Our rules of procedures prohibit any item passing in all of its stages at a single meeting where any member objects. This measure has come before this council in a single meeting, and given the state of the deliberations at this time, I object.
We're going to take a brief break, because we need our town clerk to look into this. Give us 10 minutes, if you want to see the outcome. If not, you can go watch it on TV. That was a light gavel punch. So, we're going to retake the vote we just took, because it seems as though, before the objection was, before an objection came in, it seems as though there might have been some confusion over what we were voting on. As you can see, this has been a very, this has been a somewhat confusing process, has caused some of us to be frustrated with each other. But at the end of the day, know that we always go home liking each other again. So, I think. So, what's that?
You want me to move for reconsideration?
Yes.
I move for reconsideration of the amendment.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so, we are voting on the amendment to the main motion, and the amendment puts the election in July. The July 9th date was the amendment. So first, we're going to vote on the amendment to the motion. And if the amendment passes, then we have to vote on the whole motion again. If somebody objects, two other people can object with them, and then the entire vote gets put off until June. And we have this as a definite answer from our town council with an S, and our assistant town clerk. So, the motion is an amendment to the motion to have a July election, and we're going to do a roll call. Let's start the other end at Precinct 8. Okay, if that's, we don't, I didn't mean to confuse you more. I was just trying to give people a break. We're going back to Precinct 1.
Clarification, Madam President. A no vote is, it's just as the amendment stood. A no vote is not to leave the motion as it stood originally with a November date and not move to July. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm. Yes. So, no is-
No means November.
Yes. So, no November.
God, yeah, let's just, at this point, let's just do easy things. And-
Yes. Counselor Sund?
No.
Counselor Burson?
Yes.
Counselor Alice?
No.
Counselor Pythrom?
No.
Counselor Dolan?
Yes.
Counselor Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Counselor Mass?
No.
Vice President Ricketts?
No.
Madam President, would you like to vote?
No.
Yeah, because you did it wrong. We didn't explain-
I think she wants to vote no.
You want to vote no, or you're not voting?
Oh, I want to vote no.
Yeah, we didn't discuss.
This no is because it's going to get challenged by Counselor Mass. The amendment fails. Now we're on to the original motion, which was to have a November, a November election for the, to put the library on the general election date. Counselor Mass?
Move to call the question.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Anyone else abstain? Okay, we're going to do a roll call vote, and this, to be clear, is to have the vote in November on the library. Counselor Sund?
Yes.
Counselor Burson?
Yes.
Counselor Alice?
Yes.
Counselor Pythrom?
Yes.
Counselor Dolan?
Yes.
Counselor Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Counselor Mass?
Yes.
Vice President Ricketts?
Yes.
President Renault?
No.
Motion passes. There will be a library vote at the general election in November.
No one's happy. That's good.
Counselor Wheeler?
City Council, on recommendation of Mayor Martin, ordered that the sum of $9,965 be transferred from the reserve fund to the audit account, 01001-3605301.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Report from committee?
This is a necessary transfer in order to make up for increases necessitated by the city council's decision to take over the assigning of which auditor, which company or vendor does the city audit. It's necessary to finish the audit. It was a unanimous positive recommendation.
Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain. The motion carries. Counselor Wheeler?
City Council, upon recommendation of the mayor, ordered that the following sums be appropriated from the contractual stabilization fund, the Andor Stabilization Fund, to fund retroactive provisions of contract agreement United Public Service Employees Union, DPW, and Central Maintenance, $99,386.75. Greenfield Police Union, Mass. Cop Local, 470, Unit A, $31,760.72. Contractual stabilization balance, $77,908.99. Stabilization balance,
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Report from committee?
Unanimous positive recommendation.
Any discussion? Counselor Alice?
So I was unable to be at the Ways and Means meeting this evening. I guess I've never seen a motion that said "and/or" as to the funding source. And I'm curious what the need for an "and/or" is in this particular motion. And I don't know if that was gone over at Ways and Means or not.
Do you want to direct the question to Director Gilmore?
I'm going to direct the question to you.
So, it did come up in the fact that there isn't enough in the contract stabilization to fund both contracts. So we're going to zero out the contract stabilization account, and the balance will come from the general stabilization.
I would like to make a motion to change this, so that that's what it actually says. Because as it reads now, the potential is that it could all be taken from regular stabilization based on our vote, instead of doing just that. And I'm worried that that could happen. And frankly, I'm not sure that it wouldn't happen that way. So if I could have a moment, I would like to make an amendment, so take the "other."
Any other discussion before an amendment is made? Counselor Gilmore?
We're supposed to share. I had a question for Counselor Alice. I just wanted to know, which account are you proposing that it would be if, I understand being specific, but-
I would make a, if I have the floor?
Yes.
I would make an amendment. So the contract stabilization has 78,55589, and then regular stabilization would be 52,59158. Okay. I move to amend, for the balance of it, yep. I move to amend the motion to read, the following sums be appropriated, the following sum be appropriated from the contractual stabilization fund in the amount of $78,555.89, and the amount of $52,591.58 from general stabilization.
Second.
Motion to amend has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion over the motion to amend? Okay, seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain. The motion to amend carries. And could, Counselor Wheeler, could you read the new motion? Or if it's easier, because Counselor Alice made, Counselor Alice, could you read the new motion as amended?
So, as amended, I don't have the figure in front of me. Sorry, Liz. So, the amendment is that we would strike this order and replace it with the following sum of, or move that it be ordered, that the sum of $78,555.89 be appropriated from the contractual stabilization fund, and the amount of $52,591.58 be appropriated from the general stabilization fund to fund retroactive provisions of contract agreement, United Public Service Employees Union, DPW, and Central Maintenance, $99,386.75. Greenfield Police Union, Mass. Cop Local, 470, Unit A, $31,760.72, for a total of whatever that equals, 131, 131,147.47.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so the motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain. Motion carries. Counselor Gilmore?
City Council moved that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council amends the Code of the City of Greenfield by adding Chapter 161. Greenfield Patriotic Activities Committee is attached here, too, and further amends the table and index of contents of the code, and further the nonsubstantive changes to the numbering of the ordinance by permitting, in order that it be in compliance with the numbering format of the Code of the City of Greenfield.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Report from committee?
We voted on this a long time ago. It was positive. I don't remember if it was unanimous.
Okay. Any discussion, other than Counselor Mass, and then Counselor Dolan?
I thank my colleagues for entertaining this measure. I heard some comments tonight, and I couldn't, about patriotism generally in our community, and I couldn't agree with them more. There are a lot of people who express their patriotic activity in a number of ways. The specific purpose of this, of this provision is to sort of focus attention on our Veterans and Memorial Day Parade, as well as our Fourth of July events. I think most members of this council remember some of the regrettable actions of the last Fourth of July that tore the community apart, rather than building, bringing it together. And I think that's regrettable. For many years, former Counselor Maloney, Counselor Rickett, myself, and others have, and some of whom are at this table, have worked tirelessly to promote and strengthen our Memorial and Veterans Day parades. They haven't had the support we would like them to. And this is designed to engage a broader cross-section of the community, and get them involved in the planning, preparation, and execution of specifically those three things, and nothing more. I am, we sent this back to committee to change two things. One was to specify where the appointments come from, and their appointees of the mayor, the designees, they're all appointees of the mayor, and how long they serve for, a two-year term. Obviously, this wouldn't be in effect for this Memorial Day. It would be too soon for this to take place. This is something that needs, may need tweaking down the road. I'm the first to admit that. But it's a step towards doing it, and it's supported by our veterans' agent.
Counselor Dolan?
So, I was on A&amp;O when this first came to us. And I have to say, first looking at it, I kind of expected it to sail through. I changed my mind in the course of that meeting. I have three specific kind of objections to this. The first is just pragmatic. I think a committee of 31 people is more work to manage than the productive work that can come out of it. Having done significant projects with smaller groups, it gets very complicated very fast. This is, seems like a very unwieldy structure. And it's not a structure that I think is appropriate for this purpose. Second, and increasing in concern, when we discussed it at A&amp;O, the discussion was very much not limited to the parades and the Fourth of July activity. The gentleman who came to speak to us about it was talking about educational programs in the schools, and a variety of other things. There was a lot of scope creep in terms of what this committee does, and what this committee's role is. And that concerns me. That definitely pushed beyond parades and celebration into, I think, a dangerous kind of jingoism. And third, on the largest philosophical level, I don't think that it's up to the municipality to decide what constitutes patriotism. I certainly think that patriotism includes more than Veterans Day, Memorial Day, and the Fourth of July. I think it's something that we do every day. And I think there are conflicting opinions about what that means. So I think it's dangerous for us as a municipality to validate in an official way a certain brand of patriotism. I find that actually quite objectionable. So I will not be supporting this.
Counselor Ricketts?
When this first came out, I wasn't supporting it at all, and nothing has changed. 31 is just too many. We have five open seats on Human Services Commission right now. We have five on disability. We'll have one on the planning board. We just can't fill the seats that we have open. can't fill the seats that we have open right now, so I'm not in favor of this. And I know that this got brought forward even more, um, because of an incident that happens. But I think, you know, simply not allowing anyone racist or homophobic, come speak, in Greenfield at all. It's just an easy way to solve that whole problem. So I'm not gonna support this at all, and I will volunteer my time for any group that wants to get together to help during these parades, or any of these big holidays, and I'm sure that I can get other folks on board to help out. But this committee is just not necessary. It's just overkill, and unless the mayor's changed his mind, he wasn't even for otherwise. So I just don't even want to start something like this at all. So I'm, I'm a no.
Counselor Gilmore, then Counselor Dolan.
So, we did talk about this for a long time. It's been on our agenda for a few months, and it's gone through some, um, different changes. Um, I was alarmed by this, um, when Counselor Dolan mentioned that there was an educational component. Um, that was not something that I was willing to support at the time. Um, but it got pared down, and it's, it's really just about supporting these parades and these events in town. And I wonder if we changed the name of the, the, the committee, um, so that we're not saying that these are the only things that count as being patriotic? If we said something like the Greenfield Veterans Activity Committee, or something, would that feel better? Because I think that supporting these parades is still worthy, but I do understand why you don't like that word being there. Because if so, I would make that amendment.
Okay, um, Counselor, um, Gilmore, could you please make the amendment one more time, and then I'd need a second for that?
I didn't, okay, it was like a soft motion there. So I move that we change the name from the Greenfield Patriotic Activities Committee to the Greenfield Veterans Activities Committee.
Second.
Okay, we're not gonna vote on it. It's just a friendly amendment. Um, someone who hasn't spoken on this, Counselor Ellis.
I just, um, I just want to say that having, um, planned one of these, well, a Veterans Day Parade, uh, with former Counselor Maloney with a Y, it is a lot of work to do, and many hands make light work. And that year, uh, Counselor Maloney and myself, and a, just a, probably a handful of other people, um, took on the challenge of, of, of getting people out and getting more, uh, participants in the parade. We had UMass police. We had, um, vehicles from the eastern part of the state that we had them come in and participate. We had other groups that we didn't typically have at the parade, because that was the year, as many of you may remember, that the parade was going to cease to exist because the, the folks, uh, the veterans who were, um, coming out and planning it, were upset at the turnout for spectators and for the turnout for people in the parade. Um, it is a lot of work to make parades, uh, go, and this is a very, the, the two major parades, the Veterans Day and the Memorial Day Parade are very, uh, important, especially to me, because I, until, until I had to take a job that wasn't self-employed, I was at every single parade. I never missed, uh, one of the veterans or Memorial Day parades until, uh, two thousand and fourteen. So, I think this is, I think this is a great idea. If it doesn't work, it doesn't work, but at least let's try it, and, and see, see if we can make it work, because it does take, uh, a large number of people to, to make it happen. Um, you can do it with fewer people, but it's a lot of work and a lot of, um, you know, time and energy that, that maybe some people don't have. So, I'm gonna vote for it, and I'd, I'd like to see my colleagues vote for it as well, especially now that the name has been changed to something more palatable to some of my colleagues. Thank you.
Um, Counselor Mass?
To address some of the concerns of, that I heard raised, um, I, I, we changed the name, and I, I, I think that's a positive change, and I appreciate Counselor Gilmore for, for suggesting that. Um, certainly it was not the intent to suggest that there's other forms of patriotism that are less meaningful. Um, and the, while I understand the concerns that Counselor, um, Dolan had related to the, the conversation at Subcommittee about education, the language of this committee specifically does not allow for that. It, it talks about Veterans Day, Memorial, Fourth of July activities within the City of Greenfield. It does not talk about education. Some of the rationale that I put forward did talk about education, because the parades themselves have an educational component, in that they educate our populace as a whole, not just young people, but our populace as a whole, about the important role of veterans within our community, and, and the services that Greenfield provides to veterans. Um, the, I, I get that this is a giant committee. I, I totally get that, and I get the, the idea that it might seem cumbersome, and that's specifically why it has an executive committee built into it that is charged with, um, the, the core group. This is designed to give people a title and a mission to come together, and an excuse, excuse to get together and, and say, "Okay, everyone's in the same room. What are you gonna do? What are you gonna do? What are you gonna do?" And, um, titles, titles sometimes matter, um, and having an excuse to meet sometimes matters to bring people together. Um, I, I'm not saying that this is, this is the silver bullet to solving our problem of parades, um, but it, it's, it's time to try something new, and I hope we'll, we'll try it, and if it doesn't work, I'm, I am definitely open to fixing it, because I want our parades to be successful, because not only are they meaningful to the people who participate, the people who watch, they're also important to our local economy, as our businesses, um, get packed on those days.
Counselor, I see Counselor Sund at the end, and then Counselor Dolan?
I, I think, um, I've been in a lot of parades, and I've been to a lot of them, but the Veterans Day Parade, the Memorial Day Parade are some of the ones that we need to somehow get more people to know what they are, and to get, and it's hard to, um, make any parade go. So, um, but I think this is a good idea.
Counselor Dolan?
So, just to address a couple of things. Um, so, I'm gonna read directly from it. "The purpose of this ordinance is to establish a committee to foster public participation and education related to patriotic activities sponsored by the City of Greenfield." That's the mission, and that is expansive. Specifically, and I read these as examples, "This committee shall be charged with organizing and increasing participation in the Veterans Day, Memorial Day, and Fourth of July activities." So, I don't see a place in the language where it's limited to those three things. Um, so that's still of concern to me. Um, second point, we just had a whole discussion about, um, the council on aging, and how they do not have the capacity to manage meeting rooms. And simultaneously, we're asking the rec director to keep track of all of these people, who is on the committee at any given time, who moves out of town, to call meetings, to try to get everybody there, to try to recruit people. That just seems like an enormous amount of work. Um, and I know that our rec director, uh, signed off on this. I'm just not sure that it's a great use of town time to manage something like this. And at the end of the day, I actually disagree with the statement that many hands make light work. I have worked with many groups of people, and frequently, as you add someone, the work for the person coordinating it doubles, while the work that actually gets done gets cut in half, particularly a complex project like this that requires many moving parts. So, I don't, I don't see why this should have a place as a committee in town government. Um, and I feel strongly about that. There are many different kinds of volunteer committees. The rec director could convene something and call it whatever she wants. Um, I don't, I, I just cannot see the logic and the reasoning of putting this in law as an ordinance.
Um, thank you, Counselor Dolan. Um, I would just like to speak that now that this is called the Greenfield Veterans Activity Committee, I am, I understand the concerns. Um, but to the best of my knowledge, and maybe I'm wrong, we have three veterans on Town Council: Counselor Gilmore, Counselor Mass, and Counselor Sund, um, unless I'm missing somebody. Counselor Burson? I thought so, maybe. So I'm gonna follow the lead of the veterans, and I believe the veterans want this committee. Um, just if, i- in the same respect, um, if pride ever came to having to be governed by the city, and we needed more city help, I would hope that, um, the counselors would, would support that as well. So I'm gonna support what the veterans want. It looks like the veterans want this. Counselor Burson?
I, I have a sort of a...
Oh, that microphone just traveled.
I have a logistical concern. I, I, I mean, the, the police chief is charged with, with finding, finding a designee. Well, if he doesn't find a designee, is he, he the person who, you know, serves on this, and when a police chief asks you, it's a little bit different than, you know, maybe somebody else asking, uh, you. I, I think, what, what concerns me is the number. I mean, if this was some sort of, of, um, choices amongst these, this, this, this group, um, and I also would, would agree with my fellow council that, that twenty-seven, twenty-eight people is, is, is an enormous, uh, committee to, to, to have. Um, so I'm, I'm wondering if, if, um, we could, you know, just table this for the, for the moment, and, and think about, um, um, more, more deeply, how we could use these, these points, uh, and maybe not have to sort of mandate that, that each one of, one of these particular categories, um, has to be sought out, chosen, and recruited.
Counselor Pytham, sorry.
So, my question is, because there's thirty...
The TV people.
Oh.
The people on, people watching the box.
Because there's thirty-one designees on here, it, it doesn't mean that if somebody was sick, or they couldn't get their, their backup to, to do this. It doesn't mean that they have to be there, that their, their hands are bound to be there. It means the committee picks up and moves on. I mean, when one of us are sick here, it doesn't mean that, um, we find a substitute to fill in. He, the meetings just go on as is. So, this is not a tie your hands, I, I, it sounds like a good committee, a good group of people to meet, to organize, but it doesn't sound like it's grounded if somebody is not there. Am I correct?
Counselor Ellis?
Yeah, it, it seems to me that given the fact that the governance is the people who are already doing this anyway, and the fact that all of the people who are either, you know, the, the, the veteran service officer, or the police chief, or the fire chief, there are all the people who, whose departments need to know what's going on to begin with. So it's not as though, it's not as though they're not in the loop anyway, except that without something formal, they may be left out of the loop inadvertently, in, you know, not, probably not specifically the police and fire chief, but, um, you know, the Gold Star family members who could tell their member, not membership, but tell their, the people that they know that are in that group of people that there's a parade that they should go to. Or, you know, the, um, American Legion who says, "Hey, there's a parade. We should, we should have a showing," which they do anyway. But the fact of the matter is, is that a lot of these, every one of these, you know, one through twenty-five that isn't the, uh, governance committee, are all people that should know about what's going on. And I think that's more the intent, and the fact that, um, that, that committee of, uh, the rec director and the veteran service agent, and, um, the, you know, mayor's appointed, uh, designees, are doing the, the, the work now anyway. So it's, it, that's, that's not a change. What it is, is, in my opinion, this is a way to have better communication between all of the people who we want to be involved in the planning of these events.
Counselor Dolan?
Just to clarify one thing, this, so this is gonna be a board governed by our rules of quorum. So it's true that if there are thirty-one, that does not mean that sixteen people have to be in attendance, if not all thirty-one. If there are vacancies, um, you only need a majority of the folks appointed. Um, so if there are five vacancies and twenty-six members, you would need thirteen or fourteen for a quorum. Um, but that said, if we go around appointing people, and are very zealous in appointing people, how do people get unappointed? So if someone moves out of town and we don't find a replacement, I, I actually worry about being able to get a quorum for this committee.
Counselor Mass?
Thank you, Counselor Dolan. I appreciate that question, and it, it's a good one. Um, this, this ordinance specifically gar, um, specifically specifies its governance, when then it being the executive committee. Um, it designates that additional meetings are called at the request of the executive committee, but you have to pull everyone together quarterly. How I envision it, and it may not work this way, Counselor Dolan, it could, it could, or my colleagues, it, this could be a total flop, but what we're doing now is in great shakes. What I envision it is, the committee comes together, and it's more of an informational meeting, not a decision-making meeting. It's about outreach. This is about outreach to the various communities, and getting people on board, and individuals take action. Uh, this board doesn't have any authority to do, um, necessarily anything. It's charged with organizing and increasing participation. The, the executive committee has that charge. It, those, those, those activities are already in place. This is, is about furthering the organization of and, um, participation. So I don't anticipate that any formal votes will happen at those meetings, and if it becomes a problem down the road, we certainly can, can revisit it. I, and I'm open to that.
Counselor Pytham, then Counselor Dolan.
I'm stretching my hand.
Oops, Counselor Dolan.
I just, I can't think of another town board that is not set up to make decisions. That, that's why town boards exist. Um, I, that's why we have Robert's Rules. Again, that's just an argument that this is the wrong place to situate this in town government.
We ready to vote? Okay, um...
I was just gonna call a question to you.
Okay. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Can the, can the, those opposed, raise your hand, please? One, two, three, four. I can't see beyond...
You got four.
Four, okay.
How many, what was the count?
Four noes. Actually, I haven't asked. Anybody abstain? This is a really awkward place to try to see people. Um, so, there's four, seven yes votes.
Seven?
Yes.
Okay.
Motion carries. Counselor Gilmore.
The City Council moved that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council access Massachusetts General Law Chapter Ninety, Section Seventeen C, as described in attached resolution, and is attached in Exhibit A. Should I read it?
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Um, you could just give the report of committee, and...
Yes. So this was a unanimous positive... Yes. So this was a unanimous positive. And I apologize profusely for last time I got so confused about which one I was working on. We had voted on it a while ago and we didn't, I didn't think that it was going to make it to the next meeting. So that was the only reason I got held up is because of my mistake. So I apologize for that. Unanimous positive.
So essentially, it looks like this lowers the speed limit. Councilor Wheeler, do you want to speak to this?
Yes, I would like to thank you, Madam President. This lowers the speed limit in thickly settled or business districts in the city, which is essentially the downtown core, Maine to Silver, Elm to High, as well as other scattered parts of the city. It mandates signs at every entryway to the city. And if I may, I'd like to read, I have a couple more things. I'm sure there will be pragmatic questions around the implementation of this, and I'm happy to answer any questions as far as I'm able to. But I just want to make a moral argument. I submitted this proposal because I believe in a greenfield that is built to human scale. Six years ago, my father was hit by a car while crossing Federal Street, and my fellow councillor sitting right next to me, councillor Mayo, has been hit more than once. And in the time I've been on the council, multiple people have been hit, and at least one has died. Some will say that enforcement is the only solution to speeding, but this proposal has nothing to do with speeding. This proposal is about one thing. It's not safe to drive 30 miles an hour through a residential neighborhood. And when the law permits something that is unsafe, when the law encourages people to act in a manner that endangers the safety of others, when the law makes children walking or biking home from school feel threatened, then the ones at fault are the ones that make the laws. And in this case, that's us, city council. There's a stark statistical difference between 30 miles an hour and 25. A pedestrian hit by a car going 25 will, on average, live. One hit by a car going 30 or 35 will not. Enforce of impact, that 5 miles an hour is the difference between stepping out of a first-story window and falling from the third floor. For commuters, the difference isn't between lives saved or lost, although I might argue that the life of a commuter who commits involuntary manslaughter is in many ways ruined. Note, the difference for commuters is between seconds saved and lost. To drive the length of Elm Street at 30 miles per hour rather than 25 saves all of 26 seconds. But by slowing down, by foregoing those 26 seconds, the driver gains not only a greater ability to brake, but vastly increased sight lines. Because the faster you go, the narrower your field of vision. More than half the states in the country already have statutory speed limits of 25 miles per hour. And in fact, up until 1964, the speed limit in thickly settled districts across Massachusetts was 20 miles an hour. So this is not a radical change, it's a cautious, sensible one. Lower speed limits support narrower lane widths, which directly correlate with higher pedestrian volume and support broader tree belts and wider bike lanes, all of which improve property values, quality of life, and most importantly, child safety. In conclusion, this is, may look like just a small change, but that's only if you don't consider the big picture. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. This is Councilor, Councilor Gilmore.
The city council moved that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council take from the table Order Number FY19-82, accepts Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 90, Section 18B, as described and as attached in Exhibit A, which was tabled at the April 17, 2019 city council meeting.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to just take from the table. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, so we're taking that from the table. Councilor Gilmore?
This is the one that got tabled because I did not think that it was going to make it to the next meeting. So I had said in my notes that it wasn't going to go, but one of them ended up going to the April meeting, the other did not. Yeah, but we wanted them to be voted as a matched pair.
Okay, so what is the report from committee?
Unanimous positive.
And what is this about? Council Wheeler?
This one essentially allows the city council or, well, the entities listed, traffic commission or traffic director, to designate safety zones wherein the speed limit is 20 miles per hour. And so one use of that, for instance, might be in a zone where it would make sense for us to have a school zone. But the regulations and requirements around designating a school zone are, can be prohibitive. Or perhaps in front of a senior center or a nursing home. So this gives us leeway to designate those zones. As written, it does not designate any of them, and I leave that for the future, either councillors or traffic commissioners or police officers to do so. And I would just point out that the Public Safety Commission is strongly in support of this one.
Councilor Ellis?
Meant to ask this question on the last one as well. We're voting the, well, we voted the last one, we're going to vote this one if we pass this one in both of them. What is the provision and timeframe for the new signage to be placed? And does this take effect prior to the new signage? That could be confusing, or will this, will enforcement essentially be done once the signage is in place? I guess is the question, if there's an answer to that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just want to know how.
Yeah, there is no date, I don't believe. I think there was a date and when it was proposed, and we took that out because I think councillor Mass suggested that it might be problematic, and I agreed. Yeah, this does not, and in fact, cannot take effect until signs are posted. And there are regulations around the posting of signage. As I said, they do have to be posted at entryways, that's mandatory. And I will actually continue just by saying that I had to really do some digging here because other cities have been told that there's no mechanism to lower the speed limit to bring it in line with what we just passed if there's a posted sign. And that's incorrect. I had a conference call with Senator Comerford and officials from Department of Transportation, a letter from the city, an official letter, will, listing the signs and the streets that should be looked at is sufficient, and DOT will take that into consideration and approve them street by street.
Okay, anything else? Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Councilor Gilmore? Two more left.
Yep, getting there. The city council moved that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council pursue into Charter Section 2-10, accepts the following appointment by the mayor to the Fred W. Wells Fund, Roy Emerson, for a three-year term to expire December 31, 2022, to fill an existing vacancy due to the resignation of H. Peter Wood.
Motion's been made and seconded, report from committee?
This was unanimous positive.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Councilor Gilmore?
The city council moved that it be ordered that the city vote to repeal the provisions of Section 37 of Chapter 19 of the revised laws, now known as Chapter 31 of the Massachusetts General Laws. Relative to the appointment of its police force under civil service rules, is voted at the March 5, 1917 town meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, report from committee?
So we didn't actually vote on this at committee. We had requested a legal opinion because we were not sure whether Chief Hague had to come out the same way that his police officers did. So we were talking about maybe having him attend our next meeting. Personally, I'm prepared to vote on this tonight unless others have an objection. I'm also happy to talk about it next month.
Councilor Mass?
I would not file an objection, but I would prefer to table. And I'll let you know two types of, two concerns I have. One is, we move the rank and file out of civil service. Then our pools from chief, for chief, can't, it's much harder for them to come from our own rank and file because this chief still is in civil service. So they have to make it, take it upon themselves to go out and take the civil service test for chief. And if you're not in that system already, you're not as used to it. I am not at all sure how the vote for chief will go because it was put into civil service by the voters and not that long ago, within the last two decades. In fact, it's very close to when we actually adopted the charter itself. I'm actually opposed to the chief of police coming out of civil service. And the reason why I'm opposed to that is because I've watched the experience of a mayor, our mayor, appointing the former mayor of Chicopee, Mike Bissonette, as our head of DPW. A wholly unqualified person, a completely political appointment. And while I don't think our current mayor will have the opportunity to appoint a new chief, and I think the chief that he did appoint is excellent and highly qualified, and part of that is because he came through the civil service system. I think, I don't know what a new mayor would do. And the new mayor may not be any of the people who are running now, but might be six years from now or a decade from now. And so I'm very concerned about that. The other issue I have is, we talked at Ways and Means about reform of the system. And there are very legitimate problems that the chief laid out, particularly the police chief, about the problems he's having with hiring. And I don't discount any of those. I fully agree that he has very serious problems that need to be dealt with. But our role is to look at things a little broader than the day-to-day problems of a particular department. I totally understand why he's advocating for this and why the Public Safety Commission would advocate for this because it will make their life and their job easier. But I look broader, and that is if we had an adequate civil service system that worked correctly, that would be the best of all worlds, where we had qualified people who are being chosen, having met some minimum qualifications. The number, so I, it was suggested that the system will never be reformed, and I took the opportunity to look into that. And for the first time, the Massachusetts Municipal Association has changed their direction on how they're advocating for civil service reform, based on the comments that I've been brought forward from the chief. In fact, we're having a meeting on Monday for the Personnel Policy Committee in Boston related to civil service reform specifically to address these issues. And we are looking, rather than trying to tear apart the entire system, which has sort of been the MMA principle, and passing legislation, which is very hard to do, we are actively involved in a strategy of seeking the reforms that the chief has asked for. More frequent tests, tests that require you to give a, to give a selection of where you're willing to work so that you're not, your name isn't being sent to communities that you're not willing to work in. And giving rural or less populated areas, further distance, less populous areas, access to lists on a more frequent basis, not making them wait two weeks to get another list. Acting, giving them the good faith that we assume police have, our police departments are executing in the personnel policy. And I am optimistic about change in the system. And I am not ready to sort of throw away the baby with the bathwater because the consequences for doing this and not getting rid of the chief are bad. And I'm not, I can't say that I would vote myself in the ballot box to get rid of the chief or if it was before us today, taking the chief out of civil service. And if you don't take the chief out of civil service and you have no civil service in your police department, that does become somewhat problematic. And so I would hope we, I know this is pressing for them. I would ask the council to, and the chief, who I know is back there thinking, I really need this done, to give us the time at the Mass Municipal Association to make an effort to work with the Civil Service Commission and the governor's office to make some common sense and simple reforms that will not require legislation and will make his job easier.
Councilor Gilmore?
So I think that by the time the MMA is able to accomplish these changes, I think Chief Hague would already have filled all the vacancies that he currently has under civil service.
And retired.
And he'll retire. I'll be retired. I don't, I don't think that we need to keep doing this just because this is the way we've always done it. I think that it's fine for us to modernize. I was concerned about the rank and file officers because I know that civil service does offer a lot of protections for people, especially around promotions, hiring, firing. They came and they talked to us about this at our public hearing. Most of them were fine with it. There was one person who held out, and he spoke to me privately, and later he felt more comfortable with it. And the fact that that person spoke to me privately and then came around and said he was in favor, I think that that says a lot. It's really hard to get everybody to agree on what's going to be best for them when you're talking about their livelihood and their careers. And to see that amount of, you know, I mean solidarity, they all advocated for this. It's in their new contract that they just bargained. And I don't see a downside to it other than being scared of what's, you know, fear of the unknown. But we're not the first town to do this. I think we're actually in the minority now. I think most towns have come out of civil service. They didn't catch on fire, so I think that we're fine doing this. Maybe we'll catch on fire if we take the fire chief and his guys out of civil service, but not the police. I think this is fine.
Councilors, I would just ask that if somebody's going to make a motion to table that before we go into a big, long discussion of that, please make that motion. And that we wouldn't put it off for too long. But if there's a will of this council to table it, I don't want to go through a whole, long discussion at 11 o'clock at night. But if there's no motion to table, there's no motion to table. Call the question? Second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Okay. The calling the question passes. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Abstained? Motion carries. Two abstentions, one abstention, one no. Motion carries? Presentation of petitions and similar papers? Report of committees, let's skip. Unfinished business? New business, old business? I'm sorry, that's not, new business. So we have the annual budget meeting Wednesday, 6:00 PM at the Greenfield High School cafeteria, so that's next week. Motion's for reconsideration? Okay. Councilor Burson?
I know the hour is late, but I would just like to put on the record that our senator voted to initiate what I consider to be one of the most significant economic benefits and perhaps one of the greatest social benefits for the city of Greenfield. And that is simply a train. So there has been a recognition of, finally, that this Commonwealth is an east to west state. And there is some reasonable likelihood to believe that in the not-too-distant future, we may see an east-west train, which I think will open up western Massachusetts to the possibility of some new population, which I sincerely believe that it needs.
Thank you. Councilor Sund? That swinging microphone?
Yeah, I'd just like to dedicate this town council meeting to Dan Leonovich.
Well, is that a motion?
Yes.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, I'm afraid, Councilor Sund, it's a really kind motion, but just if we did that for everybody who resigned, I think we'd be doing it constantly. Councilor Ellis?
There is, there is someone that I believe we should probably dedicate a page in the minutes to. Not Dan Leonovich, as much as I like Dan. Mr. Bishop, who was a teacher in this building when it was not new, was a teacher for many, many years, passed away just after our last meeting. Mr. Bishop was one of my favorite teachers here.
Mr. Bishop was one of my favorite teachers here at, uh, Greenfield High School. He was a wonderful, uh, history teacher who had a very, very unique teaching style. And everyone that I spoke to, uh, upon hearing about his passing, uh, has the same thing to say about him, that he was, he was unique, he was, uh, a very interesting character, and one of the most, uh, informative and able-bodied teachers that the school had, even though he was interesting. So I think, uh, I'd like to, to make a motion that we dedicate a page in the minutes to, uh, Mr. Jeffrey Bishop.
Motion's been made and seconded. Counselor Mas.
First, let me thank, uh, Counselor Ellis for doing that and, and say that Jeffrey Bishop was the person who taught me about the American tradition of what he called logrolling, and that was legislative compromise. And I think, um, his education directly led to where we are on the library today. Um, I also would ask that, and ask that, um, Counselor Ellis take it as a friendly amendment to also dedicate a page of the minutes to our longtime assessor and poll worker, Dick Henry, who passed since our last meeting as well.
Except, uh, didn't we do that last month?
Did we? I might not have been present.
You were, you were.
I withdraw my...
Okay. Okay, so the motion's been made and seconded, um, and all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? The motion carries. Thank you for bringing that up, and thank you, Counselor Sun. We will miss Counselor Leonovich. Thank you, everybody, for your patience tonight. Um, this was a long meeting. Thanks for all your work, and we need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved. No discussion. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're gone. Over and out.
All of our productions at GCTV are sponsored in part by Bay State Health, providing the care you and your family need when you need it close to home. Visit them online at baystatehealth.org. Greenfield Savings Bank, visit them at 400 Main Street in Greenfield, call them at 774-3191, or go online to greenfieldsavings.com. Greenfield Community College, providing access and excellence in higher education in the Pioneer Valley. Visit them at gcc.mass.edu. The Hammond Family, The Hammond Family are longtime supporters of Greenfield Community New Fortune Chinese Restaurant on the Mohawk Trail in Greenfield, visit them online at newfortunema.com, call them at 772-0838, and check them out on Facebook. Real Cleaning Services, cleaning Hampshire and Franklin County since 1972. We don't cut corners, we clean them. Check them out online at realclean.com, call them at 413-422-1143. Peoples United Bank, located at 45 Federal Street in Greenfield, you can call them at 774-3713, or visit them online at peoples.com. The Solar Store of Greenfield, replacing fossil fuels and nuclear power one home at a time. Visit them at 23 Fisk Ave, call them at 413-772-3122, or visit them online at solarstoreofgreenfield.com. Thank you to our sponsors for supporting all of GCTV's productions.